We have a full council, no absences tonight. Councilman Hicks, would you please lead us in the invocation?
Your Honor, Father, thank you for today. Thank you for the little bit of rain that came through this morning, the much-needed rain that we need. Thank you for the staff and the workers here in the city, the first responders, and just everybody for doing their due diligence for the citizens of Siblo. May this council make decisions, good choice decisions, respectable of one another, moving forward. And just pray over our first responders and our military personnel. In these things we pray. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have sign-ups?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. I'm going to start with item number five, citizens to be heard. This is the only time during the city council meeting that a citizen can address the city council. It is an opportunity for visitors and guests to address the city council on any issue, to include agenda items. All visitors wishing to speak must fill out the sign-in roster prior to the start of the meeting. The city council may not deliberate any non-agenda issue, nor may any action be taken on any non-agenda issue at this time. However, the city council may present any factual response to items brought up by citizens. Attorney General opinion JCO 169, limit of three minutes each. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a body. Remarks may also be addressed to any individual member of the council so long as the remarks are about matters of local public concern and not disruptive to the meeting or threatening to the member or any attendee, including city staff. Any person violating this policy may be requested to leave the meeting, but no person shall be requested to leave or forced to leave the meeting because of the viewpoint expressed. This meeting is livestreamed. If anyone would like to make comments on any matter regarding the city of Siblo or on an agenda item and have this item read at the meeting, please email citiesecretary@siblotx.gov or call 210-566-6111 before 5:00 p.m. the date of the meeting. We have three people that have signed up to speak. Number one is T.G. Benson, read by Councilman Hicks.
Thank you, Mayor. To the council and Mr. Reed, I am very interested in tonight's agenda item 10B and look forward to Mr. Reed's presentation, particularly on procurement, especially chapters three and six. I have several questions I hope he'll be able to address. First, I want to quote the city charter regarding professional services contracts. Section 7.08, amending the budget under conditions which may arise and which could not reasonably have been foreseen in the normal process of planning the budget, the city council may amend or change the budget to provide for any additional expense in which the general welfare of the citizenry is involved. And from the city's own procurement manual, avoidance of the appearance of impropriety. City employees must behave in such a way that observers could not misconstrue their actions as improper. Avoiding even the appearance of impropriety is necessary. Question one, did you really not know this contract was coming during the 2024 budget process? When I served on council, Ms. Simics told me it was on the horizon. If you knew and didn't budget for it, how does that align with section 7.08? And did you consider how this would look to the public? Question two, this contract was issued as a professional services contract, appearing to bypass key sections of Texas government code 2254 and our own procurement policy. Was this contract an architect, engineer, or surveying? If not, that specific classification, what specific classification are you using to justify it?
Thank you, T.
Question three, it's been described as an on-call contract, multiple assignments. Why wasn't this done under a master professional services agreement? Is it because MPSAs come before council approval? Question four, was the contract renewable? If so, wouldn't 2254.0301 of Texas Code, section 323, of procurement policy have required council approval? If the contract includes renewal terms to exceed $50,000, council approval is required. Is it not renewable? If it's not renewable, do we really only need this expertise for a single year, or is this going to turn into an annual contract? Regarding chapter six, yes, council has delegated authority to highly-paid city manager, but the question is whether the authority was exercised with sound judgment. Based on what's been reported by KSAT and others, the appearance here is troubling between the charter, state law, city policy. It's clear council must improve oversight. It's not enough to say that you support accountability, but you must act on questionable conduct as it arises. I look forward to the discussion tonight.
Okay. Thank you, Joel Hicks. Next up is Rachel Eland. Rachel? Welcome. How are you?
Good. Thank you. All right. Good evening, councilmembers. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. I am here to speak about the Ron Pead Memorial, Ron Pead Memorial Veteran Garden, no, Memorial Community Garden. Too many words. I apologize. It is still locked, and it's not actually producing anything but weeds right now, and it's not accessible to the community. Since the last time I've been in front of y'all, I have completed my Master Gardeners training, and I have got a request form for the garden to be sponsored by the Texas Master Gardeners. The board meeting is Thursday. Everything would be taken care of with that garden, would be done, taken care of. It would be staffed by the Texas Master Gardeners and any volunteers. We'd be able to reach out to the schools, churches in the area, and let them know that the garden's working now. Come on out. But we would need the locks removed. And then, so I do have, so the board meeting for the Master Gardeners is on Thursday, and depending on what, if it's approved, I will be contacting Mr. Howard right away with that information. That way, everything is kind of copsetic. Yes.
And Rachel, you know, I'm going to allow Mr. Hicks to speak and then Councilwoman Roberts, but beforehand, I just wanted to kind of give you a little information on how these things work. And so, we currently don't have your item on the agenda, so by law, we're not allowed to vote on it tonight, but we could bring it back. If a council member were to sponsor an item and then put it on a future agenda, then we could vote on it. So the Thursday timeline you just mentioned is a little bit too tight for us, at least, you know, for this coming Thursday, but we can certainly put it on a future agenda. Joel?
Thank you, Mayor. That's exactly what I was going to suggest, that I would be more than happy to place that on the next agenda, swear we can discuss that. And if it is closed down, it was open for the public, and so I'm surprised it's closed down. I'm surprised Ms. Pead hadn't called me, told me that it was locked up, so that's concerning.
I walk by there every day for the last four years.
I understand. I believe you.
It's never opened.
I believe you. But I'm going to ask Mr. Reed if there's a reason that we know of for it to be locked up.
I actually do know that. The master gardener that was in the position of controlling that garden retired and left and went to Florida, and they didn't have anyone to fill the position.
Understand.
And it was liquidated.
Well, then, that answers my question.
Donetta, go ahead.
I just want to thank you for coming and bringing this to our attention. I know it was a public worker that actually told you to do this. So that meeting on Thursday, is that something open to the public where we could go and just see what this is about?
It is open.
And where is it at?
It is in Seguin at the Texas AgriLife Extension Office.
Okay. At what time?
It is at 4:00 p.m., and it's a board meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Mayor?
I do, I'm sorry, I do understand that there is a timeframe. That's just, that's when the next meeting is. I'm going to apply. If it's approved, then I'll bring it back to the city, and we'll work on the timeframe as it is. But that's just, we're starting here.
Thank you very much, Rachel. Mr. Reed, go ahead.
Mayor, council, Mr. Hicks asked about why the community garden was locked, and I just want to turn that over to Julio Gomez. I believe that was your question?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'm not aware of why it's shut down. I'll get with David Howard to find out what the issue is with that.
There you are.
Appreciate it.
And Ms. Eland, also, yeah, thank you for taking this on. Does the city secretary have your information so y'all can be in contact about making presentation?
Yes, ma'am.
I've got it.
Yes, sir, I did.
I've got it. Okay. So we'll be in touch, Rachel.
Okay. Not a problem.
Thank you.
Thank you again for your time. Have a good evening.
Appreciate it. All right. Next up is Jonathan Moreno. Welcome, Jonathan.
Thank you for having me. Apologies for the confusion. I thought that was just a general sign-in form. This is my first time here, but I did submit an application for the steering committee for the whole town plan, so is this the right place for that? Okay. Where do I need to go for?
So I think that the two gentlemen will be there to review that on that.
Okay. All right. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Jonathan. All right. So that is it. That's all we have signed up for citizens to be heard. We're going to move on to item number six, consent agenda. All items listed below will be, are to be routine and non-controversial by the council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda. The items up for consideration are A, approval of the minutes of the regular city council meeting held back on the 27th of May, and B, approval of the preliminary plat for Schlotter Ranch, and C...
That's it.
That's it. Yeah, I'm sorry. That's it. Do we have a motion?
I would like to remove B because I've got a couple of questions for that.
Okay. So we'll take a vote on A?
I'll make a motion to approve consent item 6A.
Oh, let's see. Let's see. I guess we'll vote on screens. Okay. For the 6A? Yes. So Joel made the motion. Sanchez Stevens seconded it. And what we're voting on right now is just the minutes, the approval from our last meeting. Well, we're going to do a separate one on that, so we can do a voice vote on that one. Yeah, because that's how the item was written. That's why. Okay. So Joel, please state your questions about B.
Yes, sir. Got a couple of questions. I like, like everything about it. I just had a couple of questions about, and y'all might be able to answer these for me since it was put in the consent. This is stating that 116 lots, but six, or the block, 900 block, I mean, it's too small for me to be able to read what is 900 and what's not on this. But I guess my, the questions I have are, is this going to be a gated community?
The 116 lot development is half-acre lots.
Right.
And it's a tribute to the rural history of Siblo, but the developer is here. If you might want to ask him questions about the...
I'm just asking because it says all proposed streets will be private and maintained by the HOA, so that usually means gated. So I want to make sure that...
Yeah, I think that's the plan, Joel, to be gated.
And then, with that being said, because it states down here that part of the property, the green belt and all, will be taken care of and maintained by the city of Siblo. Is that going to be outside the gated area? Because I know that, like Mr. McGlaughlin, lives in a gated community, they have to take care of everything in there, whether it's water, whether it's streets, whether it's parks, they maintain everything. So my question is, if there's the green belt and the drainage easements, the pedestrian easement will be maintained by the city of Siblo, is that going to be on the outside of the gated community, or?
We haven't finalized our negotiations in the public improvement agreement. Our goal is to have a pedestrian multipurpose path easement that's open to the public through the property, so we're able to connect Schlotter Park to the Nature Center on the east side of the Schlotter Development. We have not, I don't have final details to provide to you tonight because we're...
No, I understand. I just don't want to go ahead and approve stuff. I know this is preliminary. I mean, I've been through the planning. It's not that, I just don't like seeing this stuff in there. We don't even have a final PIA, and we're approving stuff that, yeah, well, y'all approved that the city's going to maintain it. I think this project is great. This is what we've been asking for and asking for by the developers. We have asked for it time and time again, and I'm glad that the Schlotters have finally got, their property is going to be taken care of, and they were going to be taken care of. I just, you know, this part with the, you know, the green belt and all of that, you know, if they're going to dump it onto the city, it needs to be accessible to all citizens.
And we will negotiate those terms in the PIA. The PIA will be coming to council for review and approval. You'll be able to see what the city will be obligated to maintain.
We can approve that later.
And what the HOA will be obligated to maintain.
In the PIA.
We understand where the council is on those issues, and we'll be negotiating with that in mind.
Katie?
Thank you.
Yeah, so this is SF2, and in our UDC, it says that the lot width has to be more than 85 feet, and I'm counting eight or nine that are less than 85 feet at the roadway. Am I mistaken in the 85-feet width for SF2?
I think it's...
It's a lot size. It's how many square feet?
No, it says 21,000 minimum square feet for the lot size, which all of them are. But then it says in the UDC, I have it up, it says lot design requirements, minimum lot width 85 feet for SF2. It's on page 238.
Is that in regards to the zoning district, or?
Zoning District SF2, low-density residential.
Gotcha. Yeah, they, within the UDC, the minimum lot requirement is 60 feet. So anything less than 60 feet would require that alley requirement, which we had some other subdivisions that need to go through and get that waiver. But yeah, it would be 60.
Okay. So this is in a section titled zoning District SF2 Low Density Residential D Lot Design Requirements, Minimum Lot Width 85 Feet, Minimum Lot Area 21,000 Square Feet.
We can pull it up.
Yeah, let's see if we can try to pull that up.
I'm just saying, if it's in a cul-de-sac, it's going to be hard to squeeze 85 feet.
Right. No, and I understand that, but I don't want, we're here, we need to approve things that fit the zoning, and if we need to do a variance or something for it, then we can. I have no problem with that, but I just want to make sure we're doing it right and that we're not approving something that doesn't meet the UDC.
Understand.
We have a long history of approving things that don't meet the UDC, and it gets us in a mess later.
Ms. Cunningham, thank you for asking that question. Are you talking about specific lots that?
Yes.
So way that you measure the lot width is at the building front line, so...
Yes, and these are at the building front line.
In a cul-de-sac, you won't start with 85-foot frontage, but before a building can be placed, a lot must meet that minimum width is a traditional way of measuring it?
Okay.
Allow Aaron or Rick to speak to if there's a specific way we do it here.
I don't know if this helps at all, but these two are a good example. They are on a cul-de-sac.
Yep.
This is the corner of Sylvia and Elizabeth Garden. There's two lots there. One of them is, God, this is so tiny, 58.92, and the other is 66 point something. I can't read the other two.
At the, at the street, right?
At the street, correct.
And then the building would not be placed until you...
Correct. But it doesn't show what the width is at the building.
Yes.
So that's what called my attention, is that's a good 30 feet less than what our requirements say. I just want to make sure that we're good and that we don't need to grant a variance. I'm okay with that. I just want to make sure that we're doing it correctly, and we're not missing that.
And just based on good planning practices, I can tell you in every city on cul-de-sacs, even mine in Deer Creek, my front yard doesn't meet the minimum for the Deer Creek neighborhood, but the width at which a home is placed should meet that minimum lot width.
Okay.
And again, I'm not reading our UDC. I'm telling you what is standard practice, because cul-de-sacs do present that problem.
No, there's, there's those two. There's those two. And there's those four. It's not a lot, but I just want to make sure that if we do need to grant something and we do it correctly from the get-go.
Yeah.
Because I don't want them to have to wait around, I don't want the developers to have to wait around for us to fix something if it needs to be fixed.
Do you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I have a second question. We had, one of the questions that was raised was about this being a gated community and it being private. In one of the maps here, one of the tiny itty-bitty maps, it shows a road connector from Town Creek to Green Valley, or to Wiener Road. I just want to confirm that that would not be a private road, that that would be public, that connector, and that the neighborhood would kind of be separate from it. And I'm seeing nodding, so yes, okay. So those were my two questions.
Did you have anything?
Mr. Vasquez, I was just wondering, I noticed in some, I guess, page four or five of the application documents uploaded, there's some things that weren't included in our packet, for instance, like the copy of, yeah, the TI, actually, the copy of the proposed traffic impact analysis report. And there's many other reports here. We were given like the PDF, but the links weren't clickable or accessible, and these are, many of these I would have liked to have clicked on. All of council hasn't had the opportunity to look at these things. I know in the past, we've had them in our preliminary documentation, and also, so if you, at this point, because I haven't reviewed that, I wouldn't mind tabling this, but it depends on...
This is just a preliminary plat, which is not the final or anything like that?
Right. But whatever we approve, even if we say it's just preliminary, it could change, it could also stay. And so, you kind of just want to make sure...
Someone that's been here eight years, I don't want these developers to sneak one by us.
It'd be better for us to do our due diligence.
I don't, I don't think anything's getting snuck by us.
Should we get it done today?
No, we just need to cross our Ts and dot our Is.
Mayor and council, you could hold your decision on this, allow staff to have time to look into this, and then maybe with some signaling, the mayor could know when staff is ready to come back and answer questions.
Tonight?
Yes.
Yeah.
Just hold your decision and move on.
Okay.
Okay. So, yeah, we'll move on to the next agenda item and then let us know when you're ready.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up is seven, staff update. Mr. Reed.
Mayor and council, thank you. Again, I have my email ready to go for tonight, so let me give you an update. Actually, my first update is Siblo Summer Nights Event, the kids' fishing tournament. Over 750 were in attendance. Prizes for fish bingo included, 19 full-season memberships, fish poles, tackle boxes, and even a Yeti cooler, so that was a nice gift to the participants who won the raffle. And we had 57 vendors for child entrepreneur market and 43 adult vendors, I guess. Next, Me app improved wait times for fishing event. There are 152 participants, 96.5% success rate. I don't know what 96.5% success rate, other than they all did get to fish, other than maybe the 3.5%. Let me give you an update on Deer Creek Drainage Improvement. It's 100% complete. Contractor completed site restoration. Final walkthrough will be scheduled for the week of June 16th. That's next week. And the street rehabilitation package number one, projects are under construction. Deer Creek Boulevard, as all you all know, has been started construction last month, and we have experienced some weather delays, creating unstable soils. They had removed some of the curb. They're waiting to get that curb back in before proceeding. The contractor will begin pouring curb sidewalks next week, weather permitting. And then Green Valley Road 2, so Green Valley Road 2, Mr. Gomez, is that the Siblo Valley Drive to Shirts City Limits? Nope. It's the other side.
Dean Road to Westmont section.
Thank you. So Dean Road to Westmont on Green Valley Road, that one. Road excavation has begun, expected to be completed early August. There is still Green Valley Road 1 that has not started. That is the portion from Siblo Valley Drive to the Shirts City Limits. Green Valley Water Main Extension, the site restoration is almost complete, pending seeding and stockyard cleanup. FM 78 Water Main Extension, crews are setting up the SWIP, and that's erosion control, best measures, and the stockyard. And then, project expected to be completed in six months, once it begins. Again, that's the Water Main Extension on FM 78 from Buffalo Place to the Shady Meadows property. FY 25 Street Package Number 2, the city did receive bids on that today, and so that will be coming to you in the next month for award of contract. And no other updates on the CIP project, so I'm moving down to, well, what's in works? The Business and Event Center, otherwise known as the Noble Group Event Center, for which you have an item on your agenda tonight for naming. We received one bid, and it is before you tonight under item 10F, more to discuss later. The utility rate study, or water rate study, request for proposals. We received multiple proposals, and staff evaluated those, identified a preferred vendor, and they're finalizing a professional services agreement with the preferred vendor for under 50K, and that'll be coming to you soon. Well, actually, because it's under 50K, let me correct myself, that is not coming to council. That'll be signed by me under my authority. The city attorney services request for proposals. City councils received four proposals, and there's a date for interviews, as you know, set in July. And the Siblo Animal Services Facility Architectural Services RFQ, we went out seeking architectural firms to give us statements of qualification. Staff has reviewed those SOQs, and this is on the agenda tonight under item 10D. More discussion later tonight. Street Rehab Package Number 2, I have already spoken to that. We received the bids today. Something should be in front of council next month. The Multi-Event Center Restoration, this was what council had directed us to do. Go fix the turf and fix the irrigation system so that we have a field that's good for another decade or so. Well, there's good news, and that is that the existing turf has fully recovered after the park staff was able to provide lawn maintenance and care. That included aeration, fertilizer, and just good best practices. And of course, no active use. So the turf was able to grow back fully, and staff says that it looks great. I've asked Julio to work with David Howard to send a picture of before and after. They did take one up by the announcer box of before, and now they've taken one afterwards, and it looks really great. Feel free to walk out there anytime you want to during the daylight to take a look. So as a result, city staff is moving forward with the irrigation system repairs. The total cost will be much lower than the amount city council authorized. More to come on that, but the irrigation repairs are not as costly, of course. And then, on the solid waste transition update, I'm going to stay seated. However, Jason Rowe, the area manager for Waste Connections, Jason, if you want to come up to the podium, I'm not putting him on the spot, but from this meeting through August, so the transition happens July 28th, Jason or one of his coworkers will be here to answer any questions that you may have. So here's my update. It's going to be in a separate email. I don't want to put it with all the other things I normally do. We are holding regular transition meetings. Here's updates about residential and commercial cart delivery. They're going to use the city hall parking lot. The schedule for delivery of the carts will be distributed throughout the city. They're going to, they will start swapping out carts July 7th through July 21st. Commercial carts, July 10th through the 16th. You don't have to write this down. It's going to be in an email. Compactors, this is for commercial businesses, July 21st through the 25th. Roll-offs, these are really for remodels, new construction and so forth. They'll be swapped out on a separate... for remodels, new construction and so forth. They'll be swapped out on a separate agreed-upon date, because these are ones that are ordered now. And what Waste Connections said is, we don't want to take one halfway through the month and they paid a full month. It's only halfway full, let's say. They want them to have their roll-off dumpster full, removed by the vendor, and then they'll bring a brand-new one. Republic Services will be pulling those residential carts beginning July 8th, is my understanding. And so, while Waste Services is coming in to put the new ones, Republic is taking off the old ones. Every week, our city staff is monitoring the questions that are coming either through council, through the website, whatever, and we are centralizing those questions and sending them to Waste Connections. If we cannot answer them, we're still getting Waste Connections to look at them if we can. And we're updating the FAQ on the website. I do have the link to that in my email to all of you. So, every week, we're updating the FAQ. Waste Connections is updating a route map. I'm going to share that route map with the council before. That's public, so expect that in the next couple of weeks. Waste Connection said that the call center will go live around July 21st, so one week in advance of the transition. We'll be promoting that. The household hazardous waste will be... Go live at a point thereabouts with a website link, and this is how residents will request pickup at their house for household hazardous waste. And Waste Connections is in communication with the school district, one of our largest customers, if you think about it in the city with so many campuses. And we're in contact with Old Town Businesses. We're reaching out to each business individually because it has unique trash pickup. So, we're working with them very closely. We're working with building inspection so that our building permit materials, particularly around roll-offs, gets out to all existing permit holders. And then our public communication campaign, we have business outreach, community events. Waste Connections was at the Siblo Summer Nights this past week. They'll be at the one in July as well. Community impact, Waste Connections is paying for an insert that'll be in this newspaper. I don't have the date for that, Jason. If you know, you could share that. But that's going to be in this next month, so that in advance, every household receives something in their mailbox talking about this transition. There'll even be a sticky note, if you've seen sometimes on the front of the newspaper, that highlights this solid waste transition. And again, Waste Connections is paying for that because they want to promote the transition. And then social media, I've already talked about it. So, with that being said, this is in an email that I'll send to you, and if you have a question for Mr. Rowe, he's here to answer your questions. If you don't, he'll be here next time.
Katie, go ahead.
And I just checked the FAQs. It's not on there yet. So, it says that construction debris cannot be thrown out. That was yours, too? Construction debris cannot be included in bulk or in regular trash.
That is correct.
So, we have a lot of DIYers like me that do a lot of stuff around our houses, and we're building garden beds, and we're replacing drywall that our kids destroyed and doing things like that. I'm going to have to cart that off somewhere.
So, construction debris, what we don't want to do is... Because when people put the construction debris of the sheet rock and stuff, it gets wet and it gets on the long side of the road. We want to keep the city clean. So, if you leave it out there, and some people pile it up and put bags in it, if you put it in bags, we could take it. But if you've got to have it in bags, because I don't want it blowing around.
So, obviously, if I get my whole roof replaced, I'm not going to let the construction crew do that. But if I'm doing something myself, I think that's what most of the residents were confused about. Like, if we're having to replace some baseboards, can I not put those out there in the trash? Well, it says none at all. And so, even if it's cut up, that was where the confusion was, is like, how strict is this?
It's... This is what I'm going to say, is that if it's tied up and it's bundled and the no nails are sticking out of it, we're going to be able to take it.
Okay.
Okay? But if you've got nails sticking out of it and it's thrown in a big pile with the sheet rock and insulation, we're not going to take it.
Okay. Thank you.
Donata, do you still have a question or you're good?
It was my understanding, though, the hazardous waste, that that was going to take place every other week along with our brush pickup.
It's... Yeah, it's going to be monthly.
But you just made a comment that we have to schedule it.
Correct. So, what we did was full and brush pickup is every other week. So, you can use a hot water heater and/or brush yardly every other week. Your household hazardous waste, you simply reach or contact Waste Connections. They say, how much do you have? What do you have? And I think I use like, you have 15 cans of paint that you want to get rid of. They say, great, we're going to deliver it back to you, put those 15 cans of paint in. They tell you what day to leave it out. They show up. You don't have to be outside when they pick it up. They will pick it up. And that's once every 30 days?
And once every 30 days, yeah.
Once every 30 days. And today, we have to wait for an event once every six months, roughly, and wait in line, right? So, we think that this is a concierge type of service for household hazardous waste. Is that at least the way that I'm pitching it to council? Because it is concierge.
Is that it? Thank you guys very much.
Thank you very much. I had one last question, Mr. Reed, about... You said that on Green Valley Road, it was from Dean to... What was the name of that street? West Amal?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Go ahead, Joel.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. I have got to give kudos to your staff for all day Friday. Friday morning, I showed up for the downtown stuff. Your entire staff was very cordial and listening. You were there at the beginning. I had to leave to go to AAMPO. I'll give those updates later, but then that evening, I came back. They were still there. They did a great job of explaining this stuff for the downtown. Came back to the... Summer Nights, thank you. Summer Nights. I have to give kudos to whoever thought of doing the scanning. And I would like for somebody, I told this to Julio, that, you know what, TML, these innovations and stuff to make stuff easier, I'd like for somebody to submit that this year for Siblo for innovation, because that created just so much... It was so much nicer out there. Got time to talk to several. I talked to Chief Trincoso, several talked to David Howard, talked to Julio, talked to several people out there and a couple of the workers out there. I mean, they had a lot of workers out there. But they had told me about the mech center and the, you know, the grass growing back. I thought that was great. But the innovation, because the year before, we had a kid pass out. I mean, literally, the kid was standing in line. It was hot. He dropped. That was so innovative to schedule it. Hey, if you're on your phone, check, you can come fish now. Great turnout. Everything was great. I just want to say, I'm very impressed with the staff from Friday. Thank you. I know they're not here, but you can pass it on to them.
I will pass it along to them. And we'll also pass that along to the park staff behind the coordination on the...
Well, not just the parks. It was a... We had Public Works out there. I mean...
I'm sorry. I should say Public Works, yeah.
There is... The staff was great. I mean, a little kid at the very end got a hook, caught in his finger. We were able to get ahold of some fire department. They came over. We had one of them chase down the fire department. The others are over here. The vendors checking out, and so we were able to take care of that. But it was just a great night. It was nice and cool. But I just, kudos to your staff, Mr. Reed.
Thank you, Joel. All right, next up is 8A approval, disapproval of an ordinance of the city of Siblo amending chapters one and 54, providing a definition of city parks, prohibited conduct in city parks, and repealing conflicting ordinances related to alcohol in city parks. Chief Andreas.
Good evening, Mayor and council. So, tonight, pretty much the mayor kind of summed it up there. We come before you to, for one, we met at an ordinance subcommittee regarding our city ordinance to kind of clean up some language as we talked about in chapter one and chapter 54. What we'd like council's approval tonight is seeking an ordinance that would adopt the restrictions as it relates to possession or in our consumption of alcohol in our city parks. Obviously, for us, it's in our best interest to keep our parks healthy and safe for our welfare citizens that visit our parks. Eventually, as we talked about, we kind of cleaned up some conflicting language within the amendment for our council's consideration. And that's pretty much what I have before you tonight, seeking your approval.
Any questions on this one?
The only question I've got is with the fines. Those are fines that we've already had in place, because if not, I know that we're supposed to publish that in the newspaper. Are those fines that are in here already published?
No, we haven't published anything until we get them approved.
Okay. I just want to make sure that...
Can I get a motion on 8A?
And this is to restrict any alcohol?
Yeah, that would clean it up, because we obviously had conflicting language.
That's what I'm looking for.
Oh, it's just cleaning it up. We already have one?
Yep.
Well, we did, but Councilor Cunningham, we had also in our permit that the chief of police could approve alcohol in the park. So, in the police department, we constantly had citizens coming in saying, well, you say you don't have alcohol, but on your permit says I can have it. And so, that's kind of been since I arrived. And as we met as an ordinance subcommittee, we said, how do we clean this up? Because it does cause confusion for our residents.
And this went through the ordinance subcommittee?
Yes, our ordinance subcommittee met on this.
Then I'll make a motion to approve.
Got a motion by Councilwoman Cunningham, second by Councilwoman Roberts. Please vote. Eyes have it, 7-0. Thank you, Chief. All right, next up is 9A, approval, disapproval of a resolution of the city of Siblo, Texas, appointing Chris Hubbard to the CRWA Board of Managers, replacing Jacob Parsons, who is no longer employed with the city of Siblo. Councilwoman Roberts.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to see if we can appoint Chris Hubbard to the resolution to our CRWA Board of Managers. He does have his water certification, and I think he would be...
A... Sorry. A good asset to help us in all that discussion that we have at CRWA.
And he's agreement to do this, Chris?
He has been in agreement to do this.
Okay, all right.
And I... I'll second it.
Okay, I got a motion by Councilman Roberts, second by Councilman Hicks. Please vote. Motion carries 7-0. Welcome to CRWA, Chris Hubbard, if you're watching. Next up is B, approval, disapproval of a resolution of the city of Siblo, Texas, approving and directing the Messer Fort Law Firm to represent the city of Siblo, Texas, as an intervening co-plaintiff joining 15 other cities as plaintiff in the city of Grand Prairie v. the state of Texas, pending in the 261st Judicial District of Travis County, Texas, challenging Senate Bill 2038 as invalid, unconstitutional. Mr. Reed.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. You've been briefed by our city attorney, Paul Winland, about the transfer of representation on this litigation from his firm to the firm that represents both the city of Grand Prairie and all other cities who have joined on this litigation. So, I'm bringing this to you so that you can formally recognize Messer Fort as our legal representative. And upon approval of this, we would forward this so that it's recorded with the court as well.
Motion to approve 9B.
Second.
Please vote on your screens. Motion was by Hicks, second by Roberts. Motion carries 7-0. On to 9C, approval, disapproval of a resolution of the city of Siblo, authorizing the submission of a grant application to renew the Motor Vehicle Crimes Prevention Authority, MVCPA, for the FY 26 SB 2024... Or 224, I'm sorry, Catalytic Converter Grant Program, and agreeing to designate an official to administer the grant. Chief.
All right. Good morning. I'm sorry, evening again, Chief Andreas. So, we're back in front of council. Obviously, we are submitting an application for the FY 26 Motive Vehicle Crime Prevention Authority Grant. As council will remember, on October 29th, we submitted... The council adopted a resolution authorizing the submission of this grant for the application for the Motive Vehicle Crime Prevention Authority. And this was for our FY 25 grant. On March 12th, I met with council to discuss the needs as we were looking at grant opportunities and technology to improve our crime reduction efforts in the city. On March 25th, the city council authorized the acceptance of the Motive Vehicle Crime Prevention Authority Grant, which authorized us to add two police officers, one crime analyst, and in addition to 41 block cameras in the city of Siblo. Tonight, I'm returning to council to seek your continued approval for the funding of the FY 26 Motive Vehicle Crime Prevention Authority Grant. The grant would be the same thing. It would be for the approval for the two officer positions, the crime analyst and the 41 block cameras. The reason why I'm back so soon to you guys is historically, the Motive Vehicle Crime Prevention Authority offers two grant periods that they open. They open one in September. They open another in January. We applied for the one this past January and were awarded the grant. So, with those two grant periods, the Committee for the Motive Vehicle Crime Prevention Authority seeks to bring everybody into one fiscal year. Obviously, when they offer those two periods, typically, if there's funding left over in September, they'll hold another meeting to allow other municipalities to participate in submission for those grants. This is not really something for us. It's a request from them. It's almost like this is what we're doing. We want to align all the grants into one fiscal year, which will be the September to August timeframe. So, that's why you see this back in for you. Obviously, that initial grant we had, the grant for 2025 to 2026, MVCPA was funding $525,411, and our match, that 20% match was about $105,091. This year, what we are applying for, the MVCPA, the grant we're submitting for is for $487,011. $118 would be the MVCPA's portion, and our portion of the 20% match would be $97,423. So, let me just give council a little, from what I understand in talking to the grant authority, when this grant runs up and they get everybody moved in, any surplus or leftover funds will just get moved into the 26 fiscal year. Grant will continue until we would be adopted until the end of that August fiscal year. So...
Go ahead, Joel.
Thank you, Mayor. The $97,000... Remind me where... Funds for the last one was from...
Yeah, we...
Our match.
Yeah, we were using for the first round, we are using funds from our forfeiture funds.
Forfeiture, that's what I was trying to think of. It was escaping my mind at this moment.
Yeah, obviously, we wouldn't be able to continue that each year. We don't want to be supplanting with that, and we don't really have the funds in our forfeiture fund to continue that every year right now. So, but that got us through the first year.
Where we're going to get the funds in?
Obviously, in my meetings with Anna, we're looking at funding that through, I'm assuming our general fund this year, the next year, for '26 when it pops up.
Right. No, I know that's what it's for. I just was wanting to make sure, because I knew that we'd used it for forfeiture funds to help it, and that's why it was like a no-brainer. I mean, it's still a no-brainer, but I'm just trying to figure out where we're going to come up with the...
It's a money multiplier, Joel. It's 5X money.
I know, I know.
It's a good way to do it. Okay. Anyone else have any questions? Can I get a motion?
I'm making a motion to approve of the resolution, the city of Siblo authorizing the submission of a grant application to renew the MVCPA for fiscal year '26, Senate Bill 2224 Catalytic Converter Grant Program, agreeing to designate an official to administer the grant.
Second.
Please vote on your screens. Motion carries 7-0. Thanks, Chief. All right. Next up is 10A, discussion presentation on an amendment number one to the interlocal agreement between the city of Siblo... number one to the interlocal agreement between the City of Shirts, Texas, for emergency medical service protection. EMS Director, Mr. Mabit and Chief Troncoso. Welcome, Mr. Mabit. Hi, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Just like you stated, Mr. Mabit's here to give a little presentation and discussion of possibility of the First Amendment of this ILA. We are currently in a five-year ILA. This will be year three. A little background information. April twenty-second, city manager myself met with Mr. Mabit and other individuals, cities that are part of this ILA to have a discussion, you know, within ILA that we, the current ILA says that you can increase three percent maximum for the Consumer Price Index with population adjustment. Like I mentioned before, this is year three of the five-year. Over the past several months, we've had several discussions in regards to this. Because during that presentation, he revealed that he was looking for this amendment to a thirty-five percent increase for this next fiscal year. And over the past several months, we've had several discussions in regards of, you know, other means that we can cross this finish line. Mr. Mabit will go in depth in more detail and with all the numbers on why he's making this request. Mr. Mabit? Okay, I have it here. Just can't get it. Can y'all view it? Y'all see the PowerPoint? There it is.
While you're doing that, do you?
I could do, I'll just use this mouse right here. All right.
Do you know how many people are using the passport?
Absolutely, we have six hundred members.
In Sibolo?
No, total.
Total, okay.
Totally, yes, sir.
You don't know the total for Sibolo?
No, but I can get you that information.
Thanks, sir.
All right, Mayor, council, I want to give you a little bit of overview on the EMS department, and then we'll dig right into our finances. All right, so for our staff, we have a total staff of ninety-three, and that's paid staff, including the twenty-four volunteers at the bottom. Most of our staff, of course, as you can see, are first field personnel at eighty, ten administrative staff. We have four battalion chiefs, six lieutenants, eight field train officers, and then the rest are made up of EMTs and paramedics. Paramedics were eighty percent, so eighty percent paramedics, twenty percent EMT. The way we're licensed, we have to have at least one paramedic on every ambulance. We have a large area on the northeast side of San Antonio here. We cover eight cities. Plus, we have the county contract for EMS for Guadalupe County. And then we have a base truck as well on Joint Base San Antonio Randolph. You can see it, two hundred and thirty square miles. So this orange outline is our service area. And we service a population of a hundred and sixty thousand. I kind of looked that up on the largest cities in Texas, so we'd be in the top twenty for population. Medic one here is in our main station off of Shirts Parkway. Medic two's in Universal City. Medic three is in your station, Shirts Fire Station, or I'm sorry, Sibolo Fire Station three. Medic four is out here in Marion. Medic five is over here in Live Oak. Medic six is on thirty-five at the Shirts Fire Station number two. You can see medic seven is here, and that's Joint Base San Antonio Randolph. And then medic eight is right here, and that's what we call is our power truck. We overstaff, so we know we have two medics coming in every day. We have sick calls, vacations, open shifts. We know we have that, so we have two people coming in. They just don't know what station they're going to be at. If we're fully staffed, they then power up that power truck, which is medic eight, which is in Sibolo Fire Station two. I'm sorry, what? I'm not seeing what you're seeing. So here's medic one, here's medic two, here's medic three, medic four, medic five is in Live Oak, medic six is on thirty-five. We're busy. This is our calls for service. The blue line is our calls for service. The red line is our transports. As you can see, this is the last, oh, twenty years. The only time we've ran less calls than the year before was what we call COVID year one. So this is COVID year one. People didn't want to go to the hospital. So we saw a huge reduction in calls. Same thing with fire departments, same thing with police departments. It wasn't just us. But then we came back pretty fiercely. We normally had about a three to four percent increase every year, and that's how we budget. We saw a fifteen percent increase, and then a nine percent increase, seven, three. And we thought we were seeing kind of a crest, and unfortunately, so far this year, we're at eleven percent increase. And thirteen percent increase for calls in Sibolo is what we're seeing right now for this year. This red line is our transports. We bill when we transport. So that's obviously very important for us to maintain as well, and you can see how busy our transports are as well. So let's get into revenues. This comes from our ACFR. This is total revenue. As you can see, the majority of our fees we get from billing, so sixty-five percent. And then thirty-three percent is from our participant contribution. That's from our cities, the county, and then the base. Expense-wise, like most departments in government, our biggest expense is our personnel, almost eighty percent if you take out depreciation, so that's kind of where we are there. We are set up as an enterprise fund with the city. We're not part of the general fund. So we pay our way. So we pay for, obviously, everything you're seeing up there, plus retirement, insurance, ambulances and such. All right, so if we look at all of our agreements together, all of our participants, it's a three point five million dollar revenue. The City of Shirts pays just as much per capita as the other cities at twenty-two percent, followed by the base, JBSA Randolph, at nineteen percent, and then Sibolo is third, at eighteen percent. Right now, our agreement is based on a per capita. The per capita right now is seventeen dollars and fifty-two cents. And then we multiply that by population. We've had this formula in place ever since we went from volunteer to paid. So if you look at this fiscal year, we had a positive eight hundred and ninety-six population change, which equated about fifteen thousand dollars. If you look at just the total population of just our cities, it's one forty-three, four eighty. And this is if we just separate just the cities, what that looks like, two point five million in revenue. And you can see where Sibolo compares to all of our cities. Our ambulance fees, so we have not had a price increase in our fees for almost ten years. This past year, we did go up a hundred and fifty dollars because we knew we were going to be short overall. The main ones that we use here are the ALS one emergency, and that's one thousand five hundred and ninety dollars, and then BLS emergency as well. And then we also charge twenty-five dollars per mile.
Who pays these fees? Is this the insurance company?
So we do bill insurance companies. We also bill Medicare. We bill Medicaid as well. And if somebody doesn't have insurance, then they get the bill. Unfortunately, Medicare, we do participate with Medicare. And Medicare, if we send them a bill for eighteen hundred dollars for the base and the miles, we get four hundred dollars and change, and then we have to write the rest off. Medicaid is about half of that, so two hundred dollars and change for Medicaid. How we compare to other cities, municipal governments, we're on the high side. So we're here, it's kind of all over the place. If you look at this, these are set by our council. The only difference here is with those asterisks, those departments itemize. So if they give you oxygen or medications, they then bill for those items. We only charge the base. Economies of scale, so I showed this the last time I was here, a couple of years ago. So I met with the fire chief back in April, and it wasn't that hard to go back and look to see, you know, how busy just our cities are just separately. And on this day in March, March twenty-seventh, between ten and twelve, we had five ambulances on separate calls in Sibolo. And that, I wouldn't say five ambulances isn't common, but three or four definitely is. I highlighted this as expensive medical equipment services. We all saw a huge increase in inflation. Everyone did. We weren't immune from that. Ambulances were not three hundred thousand dollars, just not that long ago. But you can see what it costs to buy an ambulance and then stock it. We're right now about five hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. I just got a quote for an ambulance for twenty twenty-five, and it's at three hundred and forty thousand dollars. So we think inflation has started to slow, but it's just not coming down. So we identified a problem last summer, and we showed this to our council. Our finance director actually created this. And we were operating in the black, but you can see in fiscal year twenty-four, fiscal year twenty-five, we started creeping into the red with our cash. He did show our council this, and it does seem like a positive increase, but this is if we don't do anything. This is if we don't add ambulances or personnel. This is the last twenty years with my cash balances. You can see, we've been in the black the last few years. But again, this past year, we were in the red. So what happened? Several things happened. The first thing is, we started moving our staffing away from twenty-four to twelve-hour staffing. Traditionally, we were running twenty-four hours on, forty-eight hours off, but we were just getting too busy. And so we started moving our scheduling away from that twenty-four-hour model to a twelve-hour model. So when you do that, we add two people for every ambulance we do that to, and that hurt us. Another thing that happened, we were getting some grant dollars for, these were patients who had Medicaid. We would turn these into the state, and then we'd go into the federal government. The federal government would then actually pay the state, which then we go to the provider. And we had a couple of first good years of this, and we were hoping that it would just stay up at this high level, but it didn't. State of Texas took more of their share, you can see in these two years, and then you can see with the last three years. We've almost gotten two million dollars out of this program, so we're pretty happy about that. But unfortunately, for next year, we're looking at about seventy thousand dollars. But we'll continue this program. Another thing from the state of Texas, Senate Bill twenty-four seventy-six, it banned ground ambulances from balancing patients. And those are for people who had, who have insurance through Texas. We can no longer send them a bill. So we have to accept what insurance will give us. So we've seen a little bit of a decrease in ambulance revenue for that. And then the City of Shirts did a classification and compensation study, and we had a pretty good shortfall here. Out of the top ten positions in the city that were most outside of market, these were the top ten. And you can see our EMTs were number one, where our paramedics were number three. Ranking-wise, pre-classing comp, our EMTs were eighth out of the Cs we compared ourselves to. Post-classic comp, we were fifth. We didn't expect to be one or two. We kind of really wanted to kind of be in the middle there. So we were fifth post-classic comp. That's for EMTs. For paramedics, we were last for paramedics. Post-classic comp, we're third. We're actually tied with San Marcos, so I'd just like to see that a little higher. And now San Marcos is more than us right now. We do. Yeah. This is my plan for the future for authorized personnel. So this is our fiscal year here. We have ninety-three personnel, and you can see what I'm predicting for the next three years. This orange line is our growth, and it's just the difference between this number and this number. These two spikes, this was when we started moving away from twenty-four-hour shifts to go. Since becoming the chief of EMS, I've really kind of looked at efficiencies in the EMS department. I welcome Doge to come in to our department and look at our budget. I'm very transparent. When we, we used to be dual paramedics, and we started hiring EMTs. Every time we hire an EMT, that's a twenty thousand dollar savings. Hiring those floats, which I talked about, that's what happens with our medic eight, so we're overstaffing, knowing we're going to have open positions. Our minimum staffing is two people on an ambulance. So if you compare that to the fire depart, some fire departments where have four firefighters on an engine, they could go down to three and still operate. On the ambulances, we can't do that. So we have two people on the ambulance. We can't go down to one, otherwise we'd put that ambulance out of service. So we overhire, and that's what hiring those floats did for us. Otherwise, we would have to use mandatory overtime, and obviously, that would increase our overtime rate. We teach EMT classes. This started off at two. We're now teaching five to six EMT classes a year. Pretty successful with that, and we net about fifteen thousand dollars per class every time we teach an EMT class. Another thing that I implemented is we remount our ambulances, so we don't buy brand-new ambulances. We buy, so if you think about an ambulance, so the chassis plus the box, we're buying new chassis and keeping the existing box. So that's a cost savings of about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, and we also reuse that equipment that's in our ambulance as well. We started a volunteer program. We did apply for Senate Bill eight, where we sent thirteen of our EMTs to paramedic school on the state's dime. So that was a cost savings of about a hundred thousand dollars. iPads seem silly, but when we do our patient care reports, we normally would do these hardened computers, and those are about six thousand dollars. We're now moving over to iPads, and those are eight hundred dollars apiece. So some pretty good savings there. We have our own supply officer, who's looking for efficiencies and trying to cut waste from expirations. And then we do our in-house billing as well, so we control that. So our next three years is kind of what we're looking at. So in October, that medic eight in Sibolo Fire Station two, that will be always be on. And that's from seven AM to seven PM. It's what we call a peak hour truck. Right now, it's just on only when we are fully staffed. But coming in October, that will be full-time from seven AM to seven PM every day of the week. And then we'll start doing that power truck to this truck up here in Bracken. So why is it important to Sibolo to have this truck up here in Bracken? So if that truck is not there, you can imagine what happens next, is this truck will go to it. And then if there's a call up here, then that Sibolo truck will then have to cover over here and in that area. So anytime we put an ambulance in any of our area, it benefits all of the cities. Fiscal year twenty-seven, our plan is to make medic six. Right now, it's on from ten AM to ten PM. And we want to make it overnight, so it'll be twenty-four hours a day. And then we'll see that medic nine on more, just like we had with medic eight. And then fiscal year twenty-eight, we're. And then fiscal year twenty eight, we're not sure where we're going to put it. It's either going to be in Shirts Fire Station three or Sybilla Fire Station four. This will all be obviously dependent on, on call volume. And, you know, where does it make sense in response times? So this is the actual, if we continue with the ILA in its existing form, what will happen? And this is, so we buy a new ambulance, and we remount an ambulance every, every year. We buy that with cash, we have no debt. And then this is with my staffing plan as well. The general fund would be almost four million dollars in the red after fiscal year twenty eight. So what we are looking to do is go back to the cities and help spread this cost or the shortfall out. We want to obviously maintain our service levels to all of the residents in Sybilla. But years three, four, and five, we are looking at trying to modify that. Initially, we came to the cities, we've met with the city managers, and we had a thirty five percent increase, then a five percent increase, then a five percent increase. A couple of city managers asked if we could lighten that up a little bit. So that would actually get us out of the red in fiscal year twenty six. We did, I talked to our finance director, I talked to my boss, the city manager, and we are in agreement that we could do something like this, is twenty percent, a twenty percent, then a five percent increase. It would delay us getting out of the red, and it would be fiscal year twenty seven if we did the second option. And we are allowing cities to choose which one of those options best fits them. The other thing I am doing for this next fiscal year twenty six is I'm putting in my budget to hire some EMS consultants. I would like them to come in and do a deep dive into our department to look for more efficiencies, look at our ambulance placement, look at response times. And then, of course, I want them to look at our per capita model as well. I think it's probably age and needs to be looked at to see if we can come up with something else. That way, we don't get in the situation in the future. So the numbers are big. If Sybilla did a thirty five five five, you can see what that increase would look like for the city of Sybilla. These are big numbers. That, if all the cities did thirty five five five, that's just what we would look like with our cash positive. If we did a twenty, twenty, then five, this is what the increase would look like for the city of Sybilla. And then, again, it would take us two years to get out of the red for the general fund. The general fund borrows us money when we're in the red. I'm going to bring all these up for all the things that we do for Sherz MS. It's a lot, obviously, where we take care of the personnel, the hiring, shortages, overtime. We currently have thirteen ambulances that we maintain, just like fire trucks. It's taken us two years to order an ambulance and then for it to be sent to us. Lots of standby events we do here, of course, in Sybilla as well. We have a medical director that allows our EMTs and paramedics to operate. We deal with the bureaucracies, the audits, and the reportings for CMS and DSHS and the DEA. Lots of training, you imagine all of our EMTs and paramedics. We also do the training for all of our fire departments as well. We have a MIH Community Health Program, supplies, we do billing, mental health with our peer support team. And then we are the subject matter experts as well. So when we had the COVID breakout, I was here giving you guys an update on that. Still watching that measles pretty closely as well. And I know that this is on discussion, so I'll be more than happy to try to answer any questions that you have.
Councilman Hicks.
Quick, did you even look at the fifteen 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 option?
So.
I'm just asking.
We did not. Well, so we did, but there, there wasn't a, there wasn't an agreement to spread out the being in the red for three years. It was, one year was obviously was what we were wanting, but we were okay with the two years. The three years was not something that was entertained.
Well, doing a fifteen fifteen fifteen, you're still getting the forty five percent increase, would that not?
It would take us three years then to get out of the red, the general.
And then we're back into another contract with you all, so.
Yes, sir.
You can raise it, I'm just thinking.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else have any questions? Do we have a motion, and are we going to? Okay. So when do you need an answer whether or not we want the thirty five 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 or the twenty twenty five?
We're all doing our budgets now, of course, but I mean, I think I can come back in July and get this back on the agenda in July. I don't have a problem with doing that.
Okay.
So you guys can think about it, look at the numbers.
All right. Thank you. All right, next up is ten B, Discussion Presentation on City's Procurement Policy and Procedures Manual Regarding Procurement of Professional Services. Chapter three, under fifty thousand dollars, and delegation of authority, chapter six, Mr. Reed.
Mayor, members of council, good evening. I want to start by saying I'll take questions at the end of my presentation. Counsel, I want to start by explaining that I am presenting on this topic because the city made news recently that painted the city in a negative light over its procurement practices, including statements that a specific contract, which I'll speak to, was for one dollar less than a public vote, and that this contract did not pass the sniff test, quote unquote. And we do favors for friends. These allegations are unfounded and without merit. So I am extremely disappointed that I'm taking up your time tonight to put facts on the record on a matter that should not be a concern. I need to add that recent investigative report failed on many fronts. There was significant misinformation and failure to include facts that demonstrate beyond a reasonable doubt that A, I as your city manager properly executed my authority. B, I informed city council prior to the execution of this specific contract about the intent to enter into a contract and provided a comprehensive response to Mr. McLaughlin on February thirteenth in response to questions from Mr. Benson about this contract, and then forwarded that same email to the entire city council the next day on February the fourteenth. I have a copy of that email if any of you would like to be reminded of how comprehensive I answered those questions. The most disheartening part of having to present on this matter is that the city council minus Mr. McLaughlin and Ms. Roberts were very involved in the development of the city's procurement policy, which was adopted by ordinance fourteen thirty two in late twenty twenty three and in January twenty twenty four. And were given ample time to review the city's new policy, which it approved by ordinance in January twenty four, and the accompanying procurement procedures manual. You had that manual since October, you had it in November, we came back in January of twenty four. In fact, the chronology of the evolution of the city's procurement policy update, which is in this presentation, highlights the engagement by Ana Miranda, our finance director, and our consultant on the procurement, and myself. At no time did the city council question the longstanding delegation of authority to the city manager for contracts up to competitive bidding and proposal limits set by the Texas, set by the state of Texas Local Government Code under chapter two fifty two. When I end this conversation, I'm going to share with you what the state of Texas thinks about the competitive bidding limits through its recent enactment of new law. Further, before I begin, at no time did a council member contact me to discuss their concerns about the professional consulting agreement between Mr. Foose and the city after the January twenty eighth, twenty twenty five council meeting. Let me get into my presentation. I'm going to read this slide, and this is my message to council. The procurement policy and procurement manual are compliant with state law and competitive bidding practices. They reflect best practices. The city council delegated authority on expenditures up to fifty thousand to the city manager with an approved budget, which is a standard authority in Texas Local Government under Texas Government Code, chapter two fifty two, and is an expected practice to run business. Sybilla contracts are entered into with consultants based on demonstrated competence and qualifications to perform the services and for a fair and reasonable price per the Texas Government Code, section two two five four point zero zero three. Top priority is to be responsible with taxpayer dollars and keep the long-term interests of our community in mind. That's my message to you. Let me walk through the rest of this presentation. Four main points in my presentation, as shown here. Here's the policy evolution, and I'm not reading this. What I'm going to say is that the previous ordinance twelve fifty six for procurement had the same delegation of authority for under fifty thousand because it's a longstanding practice and law with the state of Texas. The new procurement policy adopted by ordinance fourteen thirty two did not change that. There is no material change. And at no point during these months did a council member ask to change that, to more restrict that. No, instead, the changes were made as requested by council as this slide shows. We talked about the procedures manual to be more stringent on P card procedures and potential disciplinary actions. That was in November. We came back, Ms. Ana Miranda made a presentation, we demonstrated to council that we tightened that up. Council moved to approve and adopted an updated procurement policy that was compliant with current state law, incorporated more best practices, and referenced the manual that would be the administrative implementation of that policy. Let me be more blatantly clear about how often the topic of delegation of authority was mentioned in those presentations. This slide, the next two are slides from October and November of twenty three, when we're talking about the updated procurement policy and the manual. See here that it talks about delegation of authority. Here, it talks about city manager to develop the procedures less than the limits in Local Government Code two fifty two. And we had a slide that talked very specifically about it. And the manual itself talks about when that can occur and for what type of services. So professional services under fifty thousand, our city staff worked with our city attorney's office, works with the current city attorney's office. And we have standard forms for our contracts, contracts under fifty thousand, contracts for over fifty thousand, contracts for construction services, contracts for professional services, including engineering, architecture, and surveying, different types of contracts. We said, why are we recreating the will every single time? We have a new policy, let's have standard forms. So for professional services under fifty thousand, the total, let me read what it reads in these contracts, and I'm going to tell you about four that we've entered into since January twenty four. This is the way the contract reads under payment. The total amount of payment, including reimbursements by the city to consultant for the services to be performed under this contract may not, under any circumstances, exceed forty nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety nine dollars and zero cents. That is clarity to a contractor. Don't come to me, the city, and say, hey, I know my max on the contract is forty nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety nine, but I need a change order for ten thousand, can I get that? Clarity. It also is clarity to the city staff. We shall never approve an invoice that goes above forty nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety nine dollars. In fact, if Mr. Whelan will speak on this, some people must be confused and clearly do not understand procurement because I can't go above that amount. If I do, I have to come to council. That's what the policy says, that's what state law says, chapter two fifty two, that's what our procurement manual says. So Mr. Whelan will talk about the way the state law looks at this.
Yes, the state law was what I referred to, of course, as a baseline for compliance with the city's policy and its procedures. And that is purely what I used to review ordinance fourteen thirty two. And that is a comparison, pretty much a line by line comparison through, there's three chapters of the Local Government Code, and there's two chapters of the Government Code. And I'm sorry, I don't mean to get too much into the weeds, and it can all blend together after a while, and your eyes will glaze over, but it is been accomplished where I reviewed the ordinance and made sure there was compliance with the state law, number one. Violation of the state law includes criminal penalties in this case in procurement. And I can tell you that law enforcement agencies like the Texas Rangers really, I won't say they enjoy going after this type of violation, but they kind of do. So this is something that is looked after and monitored. To a certain extent, it's hard for law enforcement to focus on that when there's, there's real violence and things in the world. But this is not something that is let go of or ignored. And at any given time, there's, there's criminal prosecutions going on in this state. You can Google it or whatever way you want to look for it and find it happening in a court.
Mr. Whelan, though, sequential.
Right.
And compound.
A, a primary, people ask, why does this, where's the fifty thousand come from? What is the limit? Why is there a limit? And what do we do this for? The state, over, over a long period of time, of course, has, has watched this and monitored this, and it gets refined every so often. But what has happened is you have authority that is to do business in this type of situation, this procurement of consulting services or other services. And you need to be able to move and, and hire consultants or hire service providers. And the, the limit of fifty thousand dollars has arrived at that the state and the lawmakers have felt comfortable with delegating to the CEO of a municipal corporation, which is what we have here, and from the policymakers and the governors, which is the city council and the city, and the mayor. And the most regularly recognized and known reason for coming up with this policy was, and it happens regularly to this day. It's sequential contracts or contracts that are made on purpose for under fifty thousand dollars because someone has a contact or knows something from the city manager, and there is some sort of, I won't say scam, but some sort of arrangement made to where the usual business practice is to purchase something at a certain price. Over fifty thousand dollars, it requires a sealed competitive bid. You know, the regular way of getting, making a purchase over fifty thousand dollars. What has happened throughout history and is happening, I guarantee you right now, is someone has decided they've come up with this great idea where they will chop those contracts up into components or make a serial, series of contracts, all of which are under forty nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety nine dollars. And they'll do it over time, and that way we could all figure out a way to get over. And that has been outlawed right in this chapter that we're discussing, right into this, in this state law that we're discussing right now. And the, the point of that being is, I'm sorry, there's also, it's become so evolved that there is no longer a time limit set on that either. that there is no longer a time limit set on that either. If the, if the regular course of business is purchasing something that is over fifty thousand dollars and doing a sealed bid for it, competitive bidding, and it is recognized or noticed that over, it could be up to a decade, ten years, then twenty years, then thirty years, there's three contracts, and those, for some reason, have been a reason that can't be determined, made for under forty-nine thousand dollars. If those would have been a hundred, that would have been a hundred and fifty thousand dollars purchased for something that had the durability of thirty years, you, you quite possibly are going to be prosecuted for chopping that up into ten-year components and trying to get it under and get away with not having to do sealed competitive bids, which is against public policy of the legislature as well as the technical policy of making sure the monetary amounts aren't added up into something that you were using to avoid that or to curry favor with a city official. So that, that's some of the reasoning behind it, and some of the reasons why it's still monitored closely today and why this has been reviewed now by multiple city attorneys and by the city manager and, and the staff, and everyone is extremely aware of, of the violations of this. It is not a civil offense, you can be sued civilly for it, but it is a criminal offense if you violate those rules.
Thank you, Mr. Whelan. So my point is, is we do not allow sequential or compounding contracting. You've delegated authority under your policy to me compliant with Texas Government Code, Chapter two fifty-two. Now, these are just four professional service contracts for under fifty thousand that we've approved since January of twenty-twenty-four. We entered into one with solid waste specialist. You might remember Lynn Landtrip, he was the older gentleman who gave you an eloquent presentation in January, and Mr. Hicks, I know that he was probably one of your favorite, I say that tongue-in-cheek because it was about forty minutes long. That was not what I asked him to do, but you remember him. He had over thirty years of experience in solid waste industry, and in his retirement, formed a company with a couple of colleagues and represents the public agencies now in procuring franchise agreements. We asked for, from his company, another company for a specific scope of work and a detailed cost. That cost that we entered into with him was thirty-nine-thousand-nine-hundred-and-forty. That was his maximum in his contract because we knew he had specific tasks, and upon approval of the franchise agreement, we would not pay him more than thirty-nine-thousand-nine-hundred-and-forty. We paid him not more than thirty-nine-thousand-nine-hundred-and-forty. We've closed that purchase order, which we opened once we executed, I executed that agreement. The next one's Tim Foose. Tim Foose, we, was to support us with CRWA, CVLGC, water resources, wastewater, impact fees, and solid waste activities, a list of activities that kept him clearly in our utility fund, a list of activities that did not have task A on ta, on day A, on day one, task B on day two, but I knew that we needed someone to fill a gap because we did not have the expertise that Mr. Foose acquired over more than twenty years of public service, more than twelve years with the city, gaining corporate specific knowledge around those activities. Now, that contract reads for payment, just like you see at the top of this slide, but we had a PO based upon Budget Amendment Number One for the Utility Fund of forty thousand. So we were never paying Mr. Foose more than forty thousand. Why is Tim Foose qualified? I'm going to take the time to read to you many of his qualifications, but there are more. I'm just going to read the ones that I think are really pertinent. He's a certified public manager since twenty sixteen. He was the Public Works Director for the City of Syblo from July of twenty twelve until end of twenty twenty-four. He was instrumental in the Syblo Water Plant at Schaefer and South Main Street, which was in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. He was responsible for achieving and maintaining a superior water system with his team in Public Works since twenty sixteen. So before twenty sixteen, we did not have a superior water system rated by TCEQ. He, along with our former city engineer, achieved an alternative capacity requirement with TCEQ in twenty thirteen regarding minimum water requirements while demonstrating the city's ability to provide a safe and reliable public water system. So what does that mean to the City of Syblo? This is what it means. An alternative capacity requirement is based upon the gallons per minute per connection to the water system, so every home, every business, per year. Now, the state says, per connection, your water system has to have the capacity for zero-point-six gallons per minute per connection per year. Well, Tim Foose and our former city engineer went to TCEQ, provided reams of information to demonstrate that we could provide a reliable, safe, public water system at a lower amount per connection. TCEQ approved it at zero-point-four-two-one gallons per minute per connection per year. So what? What does that mean to Syblo? This is what it means. On an annual basis, we reduced our acre feet by more than two thousand acre feet that we had to have in an inventory based upon TCEQ. I think Mr. Hicks knows the cost of water, it's a lot, and saving twenty-four-hundred acre feet a year saved this city money and has, and we have to renew that, by the way. He was also a CVLGC member of the Executive Committee from twenty twelve to twenty twenty-four. He was knowledgeable about the acquisition of groundwater rights in Wilson County for more than eleven thousand acre feet and the alternative planning and development options. He also served as the interim executive director from November of twenty twenty-two to June of twenty-three. Served as the interim executive director. So I said he served on the Board of CVLGC. Well, you may not know, but CVLGC consists of the City of Shirts and the City of Syblo, who've joined together to form this local government corporation to say, we want to explore opportunities to develop water, to bring water to our communities. The City of Shirts had their Assistant Public Works Director, serving as the Executive Director for CVLGC, up until sometime around October of twenty twenty-two, this individual resigned from Shirts, he had a great opportunity in another Texas community, and he went off. CVLGC, including the city manager from Shirts, asked Tim Foose, will you serve on an interim basis as the Executive Director? He consulted with me, and I said, yes, we'll go ahead and do this. And he did that from roughly November of twenty twenty-two through June of twenty-three. Now, CVLGC paid for his additional work. They paid us fifteen hundred a month, we paid Tim about a thousand a month. They paid us fifteen hundred a month, we paid Tim an additional one thousand. Let me read to you the resolution appointing Tim Foose as interim executive director to temporarily fill the executive director vacancy and to perform all duties assigned to the executive director of the Syblo Valley Local Corporation, Government Corporation. I'm just going to highlight a few things. Whereas Mr. Tim Foose is a qualified professional to perform the duties of executive director. This is their resolution, not the city's. They identified Tim as a professional who had commensurate experience and knowledge and the ability to serve in that role. Further, Mr. Foose was on the CRWA, involved with CRWA through the City of Syblo, he represented us on the Board of Managers from twenty twelve to twenty eighteen, and the Board of Trustees from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-four. He's the Vice President in twenty nineteen, and the President of the Board of Trustees in twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-four. Moving on, he represented Syblo on the South Central Texas Regional Water Group. We're regionale. This is an important group. It provides comprehensive regional water planning and carries out the related responsibilities placed on regional water planning groups by state law. Now, if I came to you and replaced Tim Foose's name with Bob Smith, you would say, Wayne, we have a great consultant to help us with raw water. Mr. Foose terminated his contract within the first month. We paid him for that month, he delivered two products before that. One of you was a presentation and executive session on March tenth. The other one was, he reviewed all past impact fee studies, and I said, Tim, I need to make sure that around our water and wastewater projects, because in every impact fee study, there's a ten-year capital improvement plan. I said, I need to make sure that we do not leave a project behind, and with his corporate knowledge, he produced a report that was shared with Jessica Vassar, who's with Fries and Nichols, and his lead on the city's impact fee update that we're doing right now. Valuable expertise and knowledge that he was lending to us, he terminated that contract. Total amount was five thousand five hundred and sixty that we paid Mr. Foose. Let me move on. LRE Water is a new consultant that is an expert in water. They're going to support us around CRWA, CVLGC, water resources, regulatory and legislative matters regarding water resources and wastewater. The amount that this contract will not exceed is thirty-four thousand four hundred and forty dollars because I still have from that First Amendment that amount to pay this consultant. I want to emphasize, the payment provision in this contract reads identical, the total amount of payment, including reimbursements by the city to the consultant for the services to be performed under this contract may not, under any circumstances, exceed forty-nine-thousand-nine-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars. The same as Mr. Foose's contract. His scope of work is slightly narrow or shorter because they're not the expert in wastewater, they don't understand our impact fees, I'm going to use them on water. And just like you've heard about wastewater, there's no better time to build or expand a wastewater treatment plant, there is no better time for us to figure out where we're getting our additional raw water resources and how to develop them. There's no better time for us to go back to TCEQ and ensure that our alternative capacity requirement is renewed. And so we're using LRE Water. You can see on the notes section how much we're paying compared to Mr. Foose. And I will finish by talking about Will Dan. The city council approved a water rate study funds in the FY twenty-five budget. We went out for competitive bidding, multiple proposals were turned in, some above fifty thousand, some below fifty thousand. Will Dan rose to the top as the preferred vendor, and their proposal was just a hair under forty thousand. So this professional services agreement is currently being finalized, it will be completed later this month, and I will execute that agreement. So here's the principles of procurement. Commitment to compliance, we'll comply with our policy, we will comply with state law, we will not violate state law, and the procurement procedures manual, we will follow. State law and best practices compliant, both procurement policy and manual, compliant with state law, I'm repeating myself, but I mean to, and competitive bidding practices, incorporating industry best practices. We have driven best value in our contracts through our consistent processes and procedures and standard forms of contracts. We have saved the city millions of dollars over the last few years because we have best practices in place, we comply with the state law, we work with the city attorney's office to ensure that what we're doing, they agree with, and we do competent-based contracting. Contracts are awarded based on demonstrated competence, qualifications, and a fair and reasonable price as per the Texas Local Government Code, two-two-five-four-point-zero-zero-three. I am professionally offended to ever have someone accuse me of doing a favor for a friend. Let me be personal. I grew up in a family of eight kids. My father was a sergeant in the army, worked super hard. Out of eight kids, I was the first to go to college, and nobody paid. I earned that degree, I earned two degrees, and I'm saying something that I can look around and see a lot of people, they did the same thing. I'm not special. But what Wayne Reed is, is I'm a workhorse, and I surround myself with people who have the same philosophy. I do not do favors for friends. I love public service, I will protect my ethics and integrity. When we talk about procurement in this city, the city's finance department oversees all purchasing and procurement, our qualified staff, and we have just top-notch staff, they're supported by our city attorney's office, and they assist all departments in procurement processes. I'm going to start with Anna Miranda, our finance director, she's sitting over here. She's a certified public accountant. She used to do auditing of public agencies, and now she works on our side. Thank you, Anna. We also have Jessica Donahoe, our accounting manager. By the way, she's a CPA, just a phenomenal professional. And Lily Samuelson, who I want to recognize is here tonight. She does a wonderful job. Certified Texas Contract Manager. We did not have that four years ago. When she got here, she was committed to improving her knowledge and skills and qualifications. She just blows me away every day on how well she works to support the staff and to help the city, be compliant with state law, implement best practices, and drive value for this community. Thank you, Lily. Our top priority is to be responsible stewards of taxpayer dollars, utility fund customers, and act in the long-term interest of our community. And I can tell you with straight-faced, looking at each one of you. We drive best value for this community, and there's no exception, none. You want proof how well we're doing? You've heard staff say this, I'm going to say it in public. In January twenty twenty-five, the S and P Global Rating Agency upgraded the City of Syblo's rating from double-A stable to double-A plus. That's our first upgrade in a decade, and they cited prudent financial planning, strong reserves liquidity, debt management planning, governance and policy framework. Let me just say, policy framework includes what we're talking about tonight. Lastly, the S and P specifically cited other items that are down below, formalized policies. So here's my message. I'm going to read it to you again. The procurement policy and procedures manual, compliant with state law and competitive bidding practices, they do reflect best practices. The city council delegated authority on expenditures up to fifty thousand to the city manager with approved budget, which is a standard authority in Texas local government under Texas Government Code, Chapter two fifty-two. It's an expected practice to run business. Syblo contracts are based on the, are based on the basis of demonstrated competence and qualifications to perform the services and for a fair and reasonable price per the Texas Government Code, Section two-two-five-four-point-zero-zero-three. Top priority remains to be responsible with taxpayer dollars and keep the long-term interest of our community in mind. And while that's my last slide, and I'm here to answer your questions, I want to give you an update. So we're compliant with state law, and the state said, hey, when you get to fifty thousand, competitive bidding. With the close of the Texas legislation session, the eighty-ninth session, Senate Bill eleven-seventy-three was approved and signed into law, will be effective September one, twenty twenty-five. It amends Section two-five-two of the Local Government Code to increase the amount of a contract that must be approved by city councils, speaking of government, local governments, just cities, from fifty K to one hundred K. We're going to come back to you and talk about that. But if our governor and our legislators at the state level realize that fifty thousand doesn't buy you much today, and they increase it, it says something that we want to remain compliant with state law, and we're going to come talk to council about it. I'm happy to answer questions.
So it's gone up to a hundred thousand, right, from fifty?
That's what the state law says. We don't need to amend our policy.
Right.
But I'm going to come to you and say, how does that amend the way in which we administer that, right?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Reed. I'm going to give each council member an opportunity to ask questions or make comments. We'll start with Councilman Hicks.
I would just like to say that I appreciate the fact that we have expertise that is getting the qualifications that are required, because going into CRWA, I don't know anything about water. I wanted to learn about water, and I'm learning about water, but it's nice to know that I have somebody I can call when I have a question. And the representative from LRE was at our, our meeting on Monday, well, yesterday, and he asked questions that I would have never thought to ask, so he added value already to a meeting that I didn't know what to add value to yet, but now he's helping me do that. So I appreciate that. So, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Norma? I'm giving each person an opportunity to speak, so according to this order.
I would like to come at a later time. We've delayed our responses before. Thank you.
Katie?
You and I have spoken about this. I express that there's, I have no concern about a contract under $50,000. This is, in my experience, this is very common. This is something I've seen for years and years. It's not out of the ordinary. And I did tell you, my one concern was that when we had a meeting, I believe it was when we were approving the budget amendment, and we asked how much the contract was for. We specifically asked how much the contract was for. We were told $40,000, but the contract itself was for $49,999. Now, there is nothing illegal with that. There is nothing wrong with that. It falls within the procurement practice. Absolutely nothing. Everything is above board with that. I have seen that done in my experience too, where you create a PO for a smaller amount, and then that gives you a little bit of wiggle room, so you don't have to go through the amendment process. Whether that contract was made out for $40,000 and the amendment was later done for the $9,999, as long as the amendment did not bring it over $50,000, it still would not have had to come to council. So, I don't think anything was wrong. My only little blip, like, I wouldn't even call it a red flag. It'd be more like a yellow flag, was that we were told verbally $40,000, and the contract said 49. And so, at that point, it did seem like something was off. Not that it was wrong, because it's still under 50. It doesn't matter either way. But it did seem off that those numbers didn't align. And I see another, I didn't see any other contracts on here that are either side of the bin.
LRE Water has the same provision.
Yeah, so that's, I don't know that I would recommend making it a common practice to just say, oh, let's do the max. We're only going to do $25,000 on our PO. Well, let's go up to $49,999 for the contract, just so we don't have to go through the amendment process. I don't know that I would do that in my position in doing contracts myself. I don't know that I would do that. But I have seen that done. It's not wrong. It just, it did, I think that the communication about the contract could have been more clear at that point in time when it was initially brought up at the budget amendment, where we were told it was 40, and another member of staff was saying 49. It was like, okay, which is it? Either one would have been fine, because they're both under $50,000. But I think that the clarification could have been made there, and that would have helped my little tiny yellow flag. But other than that, I don't see anything wrong with the contract and what happened.
Thank you. Thank you very much for this comprehensive presentation. I think it was very informative, and I like the examples as far as the other contracts that are out there right now with other entities to let us know that this is something that occurs, you know, rather regularly, three or four others, and that it's just more so of a template issue in a way. You know, I mean, there's a standard contract that's written with that particular dollar amount, and it wasn't just for that one contract that was scrutinized, however, for several others. And so, if council members have, you know, an issue with the template, then that could be something that they could potentially bring up. But as far as the practice, I think everything is within state law and no error or omission, no issue whatsoever. So, thank you, Mr. Reed. Councilman Mahoney? Randy?
I just want to say thank you, Mr. Reed, for your presentation. It was very informative, and it puts everything into perspective, into the light. There wasn't anything wrong here. This was within your scope. It was within our policy. I'm just, I don't even understand how we got here. And we spend countless time over defending things that we shouldn't have to defend. That's why we have policies and procedures. They align with state law. And I think your reputation speaks for itself, and you have my utmost support.
Thank you. Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Reed. I appreciate this presentation. I appreciate all the work staff does day in, day out, to get our city where we need to go and to continue to thrive. I did have a couple of things to say, but you hit on some of them. To your point, I had a question from a constituent of mine about Mr. Foose's contract. First thing I did is I contacted you, and I said, hey, let's hammer out all the details. Great explanation, not only to satisfy that resonance questions, but also for my own. So, if there were follow-up questions, I had easy reference, and I can go to the details. You responded to me within 24 hours, I believe, which I forwarded that response, never received a follow-up from that individual. You asked me, can I share this with the rest of the council? I said, absolutely. There seemed to be a couple of questions about Mr. Foose's contract. Let's get that information out to all of council. February 14th, I believe? Okay. So, again, this is another situation where council has added information. Now, one question was posed, Mr. Reed, about this. To your point, we had members go to the news about this. Mr. Reed followed all laws, procurement procedures, ethical standards. Accusing him of favoritism without evidence undermines not only his integrity, but the integrity of our entire process. Consulting agreements are often used to retain individuals with a high level of expertise. It is common practice in both municipalities, federal governments, and private entities. I myself have been hired as a consultant in my time. There were questions raised about Mr. Foose's rate compared to what his salary was. When I was hired as a consultant, I was paid four times my salary. It is not uncommon for consultants to make significantly more than they made in the public sector. It is very common. Mr. Foose was going to cost us $160 an hour. Due to a statement that was made by a former council member that was read by a current council member, Mr. Foose walked away. He didn't want to be a part of this mudslinging. We now have a firm doing much of what Mr. Foose was going to do for $90 more an hour. And a lot of what we have to pay him to do is to learn a lot of the things that Tim already knew. That's not, this isn't on you, Mr. Reed. This is on us. But that's not being fiscally responsible. You were able to secure a consultant for $160 an hour, and because of others' actions, we're paying $90 more per hour. We're getting ready to enter budget season. Last year, we asked citizens to vote on three propositions. We don't know what we're going to have to ask citizens for again. How likely are folks going to be able to support propositions if the narrative out there is that we're doing favors for friends? If that's the narrative being pushed in public, how likely is someone going to be, yes, please, raise my taxes? These decisions are not made lightly when we go to the citizens and ask them to increase their own taxes. We've made it more difficult on ourselves. I don't know what's going on in Sybilla. Seems like we have a cabal or a shadow government trying to undermine the city, personally attacking Mr. Reed's integrity. I don't speak a whole lot up from the dais, but it seems like every time I do, this is what we're talking about. Attacks. Baseless attacks. That procurement policy was voted in by a majority of council, 4-3, back in January 9, 2024. The budget amendment was voted 6-1. If you had a problem with it then, that was your opportunity to speak, not to go to the news. Because people understand, we have the court of law, and we have the court of public opinion. Court of law states the burden of proof is on the accuser. Court of public opinion is well-known that that burden of proof falls on the accused. Mr. Reed, I think you've done a phenomenal job of proving that we are following policy. We are following state law. I only speak for myself, but I apologize that your name was drug through the mud with baseless accusations. I apologize to the rest of the staff that this is how we continue to operate. You all deserve better. I can only control my actions, but I promise you from here, I will not do that. If I have a problem, if I have a question, I will reach out to you individually. That's what I do. I see you guys in the hallway. I have a question I'll ask. I didn't think I could be more embarrassed than I was last time, but here we are, at a new low. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Reed.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Well, now's your opportunity, Norma. Do you want to go, or we're going to move on to the next item?
No, I see how this usually goes, right? So, usually, the one who has the last word goes ahead and shames everybody else. So, I hope that that's not the intent. But however, no, I agree with Ms. Cunningham. The concern was brought up earlier that we were told it was going to be for $40,000, and yet, we received a consulting contract for $49,999. The others were not for that amount. Missed the solid waste.
LRE Water is for the same amount.
So, the solid waste specialist, for instance, and this has nothing to do with procurement processes at all. The staff is great with the procurement processes. To bring in the staff for a defense makes it as if there was an attack on the staff. There was never an attack on the staff. This was about transparency, and this is what transparency, it looks like, absolutely. So, when we're asking a direct question from the dais, and then we receive additional information that is quite different, without any clarification as to why there's a difference in it, surely, it was completely legal, $49,999, but it leaves one to wonder why. It leaves one, and then to where else, correct? So, my thing is, the solid waste specialist, for instance, very qualified, many years of experience, former city manager. Why was his contract not $49,999? Why weren't everybody else's contracts $49,999? What is the measurement for every single one that comes under $50,000 to determine who is, who has the value of $49,999? Now that the limit's going up to $100,000, would it have been $99,999? I don't know. I don't know. But it was just about being upfront, transparent, and to, I just want to address Mr. McLaughlin. This is the second time that you mentioned that if it was okay, then it was approved. Now, why mention it now? We can mention things repeatedly, if we'd like to, if we want further clarification in the future. Just because there was a decision made in January does not mean that you cannot bring it up again. If we have further questions, any further clarification, we can bring it up again. We have the right to ask questions for our citizens. As a matter of fact, that's what we're supposed to do, is to ask questions. Okay? So, I just wanted to go ahead and clear that up, that it was complete suspect. And I hope that, to Ms. Cunningham's point, I hope that it doesn't happen again. I hope that if there's a difference in the future, that it is brought to council to say at the meeting. We stated this, however, it is this. So, there was an instance one time where we're talking about bids, and then I had asked from the dais regarding the lowest bid that we have to accept. And you had mentioned we have to accept the lowest bid. But then you came back to me in an email and said, I'd like to correct myself. We have to, we have to accept the lowest responsive bid.
Yes, I corrected the word.
There was never any clarification. There was never anything that, to help us understand that it was moving from $40,000 to $49,999. So, that's, in the future, again, just further clarification would be great.
Ms. Anche Stevens, I appreciate those comments. And you're right, you have the right to ask the questions. Let me repeat to this council. After January 28th, after February 14th, I received not one email, not one request to discuss that contract. Not one council member put an agenda item to discuss this contract. So, I completely agree, and I know that you'll exercise your right to put things on the agenda. I know you'll exercise our relationship to ask me questions. Many of you do. And that's what I expect.
Councilman Mahoney?
Briefly, I just want to say, I don't see any red flags in this. I don't see any yellow flags either. I'm embarrassed that you're in a position of speaking up about these things where you feel offended, and I don't blame you a bit. I just, I just think it's all uncalled for. And it seems to me that we're, we have situation where some parties want to make you look bad, want to make the city look bad, and they're trying to convince the public that all these dots are connected, and I just don't see the connections. So, I don't have trust issues about this. That doesn't mean you get a rubber stamp on everything forever. We're going to be watching. But I think this level of scrutiny is a little bit embarrassing.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Mr. Reed. We're going to move on. Actually, we're going to go back to Item 6B, approval of the preliminary plat for Schlotter Ranch. I know we wanted to answer those questions that council had so we can get Chad and others out of here, so they don't have to join us all night.
Mayor and council, while Rick and Aaron are passing things out, I think I answered every question that was posed by Mr. Benson that was right into the record tonight, except for one. I'm going to state it for the record. I did not during the budget process foresee this contract. Ms. Simics? Did you ever have a conversation with me during budget to overhear that I was going to do a contract?
No, I didn't.
Okay.
I'll be retiring until, hopefully, weeks before he announced it.
So, I want to clarify that. That was the only question from that list that I did not answer directly in that presentation.
Thanks again, Mr. Reed.
Mayor members of the commission, my apology for not having a legible copy of the documents in your packet. Hopefully, that is before you. And we'll make sure in the future to have that back up for any preliminary plat that we have.
Mostly, it's just embarrassing when I tried to zoom in on my paper. Like, oops.
Just to clarify, on the first question that was asked on the lot width requirement of 80 feet, for the SF2, it is required that the minimum lot width be 80 feet. And, but there is another section of the code that provides the approach used to measure the width on cul-de-sac bulbs and elbows when you have irregular-shaped lots, and you measure that from the building setback line. And so, if you look at all those lots, I think the, we went back and measured them. The minimum lot width on one of those at the building lot is 98 feet. So, we think they're all in compliance with the code. The project also provides for two roadway widenings, one along Wiener Road. That'll be a 12-foot widening with the property owner and developer dedicating right-of-way for that widening, as well as paying for the widening. The same thing, again, over on Green Valley Road. They'll be providing an additional 14 feet of right-of-way dedicated to the city and upgrading that right-of-way. The total amount, somewhere in the neighborhood of $600,000. According to the traffic impact study before you, the current level of Green Valley Road is at a level of Service A, and after post-construction, it will continue to operate at that level at that intersection with the subdivision. And if I misunderstood the earlier question about the extension of Bentwood Pass, would that be within the private subdivision or the public? It's actually just a right-of-way dedication to the city, and they're actually initially dedicating the land as open space, not parkland, open space. So, that way, when the city is ready to improve the extension of Bentwood Pass, which will become the new Wiener Road, that would all be in public, and we would be able to determine the exact alignment within that open space dedication. So, we want to thank the developer and the family for, once again, providing that. What's not used as the extension of future Wiener will be added to the existing Schlotter Park. So, it'll be an expansion of the Schlotter Park as it exists today, the footprint today. The TIA doesn't have any major findings. I would say that as traffic impact goes, this is on the extremely low side. The engineer is predicting that the AM peak traffic impact is only about 80 vehicles. 21 will be entering the subdivision, and 60 will be exiting in the AM peak in the morning. And in the evening, 67 vehicles will be leaving. And in the evening, sixty-seven vehicles will be leaving and forty will be exiting. So that's, that's really a negligible traffic impact by a development of this size. The developer, Chad Smith, is here as well as his engineer. If you have any questions for the developer or the engineer on the project, or we'd be able to answer any questions the commission might have.
Thank you so much. This is much easier to read, and thank you for that answer. And that, that helps too for the future. Now I know where to measure it from. I really appreciate it. Y'all did that quick, too.
Ready to make a motion?
Yeah, I make a motion to approve ten B. Oh, it said ten B on there. Six B. Sorry, it said ten B on the screen.
I apologize. It was six B. Sorry.
Approval of, I, I make a motion to approve the preliminary plat for Schlotter Ranch, whatever number it may be.
Six B. There you go. And we got a second by Hicks slash Roberts. Whoever. Motion carries seven zero.
We appreciate y'all doing this because you go and you look at the papers that we got in our packet. There's no way we could go through that and, and look and see. And now I see where there's just only two entrances, one on Wiener, one on. It was very confusing looking at the, the small ones, so I appreciate y'all bringing this back to us. Really appreciate the traffic study because you couldn't click on it and get anything back.
We'll fix that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We're going to go on with C. That's ten C. Discussion action to allow the city manager to sign a change order for the F Y twenty-three street reconstruction package, one, Dean Road and Bolton Road repairs in the amount of one hundred and twenty-one thousand, five hundred and thirty-eight dollars and thirty-three cents. Mr. Gomez.
Good evening, mayor, council. So just a little background for this contract. This was the street maintenance package, one, which included Dean Road, Bolton Road, and Lower Seguin. The original scope for this project, when we initially had put this out for bid, the engineer's estimate came in at nine point eight million. When we did the bid opening in November of twenty twenty-three, it came in at six point three. And the funding sources, we put those in the council memo. On December twelfth, city council authorized the city manager to execute the contract with D and D, and included the added alternate for Guadalupe County to fund a portion of this project, which brought down the city's portion to five point one million dollars. On February thirteenth in twenty twenty-four, city council approved the interlocal agreement with Guadalupe County in the amount of one million, one hundred and forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five dollars for the improvements within the Guadalupe's jurisdiction. On April twenty-sixth, we entered an agreement with the city of shirts to execute a reimbursement agreement for the manhole adjustments that we did on Dean Road in the amount of nine thousand, eight hundred and twenty-three dollars. And then during the August thirteenth meeting, we executed, we had to bring forth a to council, uh, change order because we exceeded the fifty thousand at that point, which still was less than one percent of the total contract amount. So our recommendation is allowing the city manager to execute this contract with D and D to repair the sections of asphalt along Dean Road and Bolton that have developed white cracking due, due to weather impacts and the expensive soils. The total of these repairs is one hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars, covering approximately four thousand square yards. In the packet, I included the actual measurements for Dean Road and Bolton, along with markups on the plan set showing where these repairs are going to be made. This area represents less than seven percent of the total project that, that we did for this package and less than three percent of the total contract amount. So currently, right now, we've completed all pay items on this contract, and we actually do have a savings of forty-five thousand, so the actual increase to the contract for this change order would be seventy-six thousand. And so for the financial impact, we did have interest earnings from the twenty twenty-four certificate of obligations funds, and I did put down a schedule down here just to show exactly where we're at with all these change orders. So the total change orders for this contract is one, would be one hundred and seventy-six thousand, which is, like I said, three percent of the total contract amount. Are there any questions?
Go ahead, Councilman Hicks. Let's keep this brief, though. I want to keep this meeting moving along.
I've got a serious issue with this. Why are we not warranting? Why is there no warranty? Because I'm, 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 this is really, the, the road wasn't even finished six months, and it had already started. That shouldn't be on the city to come up and pay for that.
So I will say that the, when we got the geotech report for this project in the geotech report, and I can provide you with a copy of the geotech reports for these streets, it did say in there that even with all the recommended repairs that we were doing on these streets, that cracking would be occurring because of the expensive soils in this area. In addition to that, if you look at the areas where we are making the repairs, there's a lot of trees in this area. So just as y'all are aware, when we, when y'all did the project on Sybalo Valley Drive, there was an issue with the trees because the trees do soak up that moisture. So when we were doing these projects, there was, and during a time where we were getting a lot of rain. Since that time, the rain stopped. We entered a drought season. The soils went back down. So that contraction and everything, so the road is not actually failing. The road is just cracking. There's a big difference between cracking and failing. If it was failing, you would see a lot of alligator cracking. If you see these, the cracks that are on this street, they're just, they're just separating because of the road that's expanding asphalt cracks. I've been doing asphalt for many years. I've seen every, everything that we did on this road was according to the specifications. We did material testing. We can provide you with those results as well. Everything did pass on this, on these projects. It's just the, the soils that we have in Sybalo are very, very expensive, and that was the main issue that, that caused these cracking, this cracking issue.
Donetta Roberts.
Hey, don't understand roads, and I'm not going to say that I do, but you made a comment that in your geo study that you knew that this was going to be a possible issue. Is there not something that could have been done that kind of played into help preventing that from happening?
So everything that we did, the, the only thing that we probably could have done additionally, and I wasn't here when we were developing this project, was possibly add some ribbon curb to this. So projects that we're doing moving forward, if there are, if there isn't curb present, we are installing ribbon curb. We did run some preliminary estimates on that, and to do ribbon curb for these two projects would have increased the contract by over five hundred thousand dollars. So at that time, I don't think the city was looking at doing that. So that, if that is something that the city wants to explore in the future, we can go back and install ribbon curb, but just letting you know that that would cost over five hundred thousand dollars to install ribbon curb on Bolton and Dean Road.
Norma, did you have a question?
Yes, I do. You had, you had mentioned materials testing, and I know that one time you and I were emailing back and forth regarding materials testing. Also, does that include soil testing? Because I know on our first package, apart from what the contractor does as far as testing their materials, and then we have a third party that also does material testing. At any point in time, when it's raining, when it's dry, is the soil itself being retested along the way to see if the conditions are still adequate? That way, we don't have problems like this. And another thing is, can we, Mr. Reed, can we look at possibly adding in our R F P some sort of warranty from our contractors so that we don't have to come up with tens of thousands of dollars again for cracking issues? Just what are the things that we can do to better mitigate so that we are not out money constantly all the time since we already know, since it's common knowledge that we have soil issues? What can we do better to help prevent us having to pay more?
Didn't we already put in a two-year warranty?
On this one, we did, we have.
I know not on this one, but didn't we already put that into our processes?
No, we currently don't have a two-year warranty. We have a one-year maintenance.
Okay.
So.
Just expand on the soil testing and.
So I will say that the city did do its due diligence on this project because they did the geotech. So it is recommended that we do a geotech because the geotech will tell us what the P I, the plasticity index is of that soil. That in turn tells us exactly what we have to do to fix this road, to the best of what the knowledge that we have of that infrastructure. So it was recommended that we did, that we went in, we did the lime treated subgrade. All that, we did material testing on. We tested, tested the soils to make sure that the moisture was there, that it brought down that plasticity index to where it needed to be, so that way we can build the road on top of that. We installed GeoGrid, which is great preventative measures to try to help with cracking. So we did everything that, that the engineer recommended to do within the geotech. So when you're having issues like this, it is recommended that you get the geotech report, which is what the city did at that time. So that is best practice, what to do on a project like this.
Mr. Gomez, if I can just add to council. Mr. Hicks, you'll remember, as well other council members who were here back in twenty twenty-two, we had change orders for the Santa Clara Bolton Road project, and D and D contractors was the contractor. In fact, Mr. Hicks, you and Mr. Benson went and visited with Kelly Dickens and asked him about those change orders because council didn't take action. At the following meeting, you and Mr. Benson and the majority of council supported those change orders. So we have good contractors doing good work that our construction inspectors ensure it's not just the right material, that it's installed to the specifications. And so in this instance, as Mr. Gomez, who brings the expertise to the city, demonstrated and just as reiterated, in our area, roads will shift. And in this case, the road didn't fail. The asphalt shifted because of the soil, and it's within the budget based upon the funds available. So I know I'm frustrated that we have to do things like this. But these are well-constructed roads, and if we want to up our standard, then we'll put ribbon curb on every single rural road section, and we'll have to fund those when we get the bids. We can do that. We can add it as an add alternate. Every single one, ribbon curb. We can do that.
Yeah, I would recommend doing that. Can, can we get a motion on this one?
Real quick, I want to, you, you mentioned, Mr. Reed, that me and Mr. Benson met with them. We did. But we met with them because of water line. We met with them because sewer, if you don't go in there and, and, and.
If we don't, yes, if we don't do something to it, it will fail.
But I, I just wanted to clear that up. We, yeah, we met, but it wasn't because of the road failures. It was because of other things. The, the Green Valley S U D sewer line had failed.
And my, my point was you sought to understand, and I always, I always appreciate that.
Look like, I, I agreed with you, but there was reasons.
Seeking, seeking to understand, that's all.
Thank you.
All right. Motion, please, on ten C.
Make a motion to approve ten C. Sorry, that wasn't, I made a commotion to approve ten C. My mic wasn't on.
Okay, we got you, Katie. And then second by Councilman Randy Roberts. Please vote. Okay, motion carries six one. All right, we're going to go on to D, discussion action to authorize the city manager to negotiate a contract for architectural engineering design for the new animal shelter. Ms. Chief Hawkins.
Good evening, mayor and council. So as you'll recall, back in November twenty twenty-four, the citizens approved Proposition A on a ballot to approve the construction of a new animal shelter in the city of Sybalo. Tonight, we're asking that the council approve for the city manager to negotiate a contract with Quorum Architects to design this new animal shelter for the city of Sybalo. Quorum worked with the city back in twenty twenty-three, and they did our needs assessment to determine if we needed a new animal shelter and what the requirements for that new animal shelter would be. We had five qualified firms who produced, uh, our responses to the R F Q. Myself, Mr. Gomez, Mr. Otto reviewed those proposals. We interviewed the top three firms, and after the interviews, the staff selected Quorum Architects as the firm we would like to move forward with on this project. Quorum has done a great job working with us when they did the needs assessment for the city. They're professionals who have a great deal of experience working on animal shelters. And we believe Quorum will be a, do a great job for the city, the residents, and the animals in our community moving forward if you all approve us to negotiate this contract and hire them to design of our animal shelter.
Any questions for Brian? Katie, you want to make a motion?
I make a motion to approve ten D.
Please vote on your screens.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brian. Motion carries six zero. Okay, on to E. That's ten E. Discussion action on naming the city's newest facility, formerly known as the Noble Group Event Center, located at two zero three South Main Street. Mr. Reed.
Thank you, mayor. Council members, back in March, I presented to you on an update on the use of space of our newest facility. And in that presentation, I provided you as an attachment, the naming of the facility policy that the city has, and said, I'm going to come back, and then I would like to start gathering your suggested naming of the facility. Remember, you can name the whole facility. You can name a portion of the facility, right? So tonight, I attached that same policy. The procedure is identified in my cover memo. So I'm not going to read those, but there are seven. There's also some criteria, and that's on the second page of the cover memo. So I'm here to start taking your suggestions. You do not have to name it tonight, but it will open in September, and we would like to have this facility named, to be able to make signs for it as appropriate. And so I'm here to take any questions, but really, I'm here to listen and see what your ideas are for names. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll start down on the, with Jeff on this end. Do you have any suggestions, Jeff? No. Randy, you got any suggestions? Councilman Mahoney?
I'll just say a general comment. The Sybalo and Sybalo Creek, and some of those terms are used all up and down from here to Kerrville, all over the place. I'd like to avoid one more thing with the name Sybalo on it. That's all.
Okay, I'd propose Jackson Hall to honor Donovan Jackson and his family. Katie?
I think we should keep it generic and do Sybalo Event Center or something similar. We don't have any buildings named after people, um, living or dead, and I think that we should probably keep it that way.
It would appear that the policy gives us the option to also see if the committee would like to name the facility as well. Is that correct?
Yes, it also allows you to see, and which one are you reading from?
Um, I believe it's, uh, number two suggestions for names may be solicited from organizations, individuals. If a contest or competition is to be held, so forth. I would like to get input from the community, you know, just to see if it could be something that could be agreed upon. We can just, this is for the residents, and if they have input, if they like for it to name it, I'd rather not just be solely on us, um, have input.
We, if, if that was the desire of council, we'd work with our communications manager to put something on social media, find a way for people to put their suggestions in an open-ended box, right? And we could bring that back to council. If that's something council is interested in.
I, I like that idea. Maybe the historic committee could also give input as they know the history of Sybalo probably better than most people.
Donetta?
I like the idea as well of having it go to the, to the citizens. Or just looking at it as maybe Old Town Event Center, since it is in Old Town Sybalo.
Okay, Joel?
I'm with what Katie had said originally, just keep it generic, you know, annex two building, event center or community center. I don't know that we need to name it a specific name. Normally, people name stuff after people have passed, or people have donated a lot of money to have their name on it, which is part of our policy. But I'd, I'd say just keep it generic, that it's Annex Building Two Community Center.
Okay, so it sounds like we got some ideas. Maybe let the community chime in?
So for clarity on direction, if you'd like us to pursue an online.
Yeah, yeah, I think so. Okay.
We could open it up for a two-week period that allows us to come back to you. We could open it up for a two-week period that allows us to come back to you and provide some results. We, in the meantime, we will ask the historic.
Committee at their next meeting, Ms. Semics, when, when do they meet next?
The 26th of May, of August, I mean, of this month.
Okay.
It's really down this agenda.
So June 26th, the historic committee will offer some ideas, and I will work with the communications manager to get something online.
Could we do it for longer than two weeks, Mr. Reed? Because there's people in and out on vacation. It is summertime, and that way, it gives more opportunity. Maybe, I don't know, I think maybe 45 days would be good? Or is there a reason that it needs to be two weeks, such a short time?
I just said two weeks as, with no basis. So the facility's opening in September. Depending on the wall signs that we have to make, let's just say we need to have something to assign company, because this isn't a banner or anything. If we want the wall sign up before it opens, I would think that we'd have to be, have, have the sign to assign company at least 45 days before. So let's say that's August 1st. So I'm trying to back into, how long can we do this? I think 30 days is okay, but when we come back to council, maybe the first meeting in August, you'll have to really make that decision.
Absolutely.
So I'm, I'm, I'd ask council, what do you want?
Do it mid-July, and that way, maybe at that second meeting in July, we can.
Okay.
We'll have already access to the names to kind of think about, and then we can vote on that by.
If council, if I don't hear. Okay.
Yeah, 2nd of July, all right.
And could we also consider doing some sort of a ceremony for the opening of the convention center just as well?
It is.
Yeah, we're already planning that.
Yes, we are absolutely celebrating the opening of this facility.
When is that going to happen?
When it's finished.
No, no, when it's finished, yes, I know, but it's going to be right away.
With council's approval of a contract tonight for our contractor to proceed with the renovations, we will get a timeline from him on how long it will take to do Phase One with that timeline. Then we're going to start building it. And I will, in my updates to you, update you on that progress. We will select a date that council approves, right, for an opening ceremony. So I'm sorry, I don't have the exact date, but 100%, we're going to celebrate, and council will help us pick that date, because we want all of you there.
Thanks, Mr. Reed. All right, we're going to move on to F, discussion action on the award of bid for building renovations of 203 South Main Street to KW Construction, Inc., in the amount of $142,700 bucks.
Yes, sir.
Brian Huggins?
Yeah, we're asking council to help, to allow the city manager to negotiate a contract with KW Construction for the renovation of that newly acquired building at 203 South Main. Staff met with KW Construction and another independent contractor that y'all might know by the name of Mr. Sash Boyle over there before we started looking at the renovations. Both of those individuals, KW and Mr. Boyle, provided some preliminary cost estimates to us. They were both within $3,000 of each other. But we also realized at that point, it was going to be well over $50,000 to renovate the facility. So we had opened a bid process to get qualified bids for the project. KW was the only responsive bidder who submitted a bid for us. Mr. Gomez actually reached out to a construction company who's on a purchasing cooperative that requires no bidding process. That company looked at the scope, provided a quote for us, and that quote was substantially higher than the bid that we got from KW. So it should be noted that KW Construction did the renovation in City Hall. They were great to work with, they were responsive to our staff, and so we're recommending the approval of the contract with KW tonight.
Any questions?
Motion to approve 10F, it's written.
Second.
No one in favor? I mean, I'm sorry, but.
Thank you.
So in the, the bid that was provided for the $120,000, I mean, is there not a breakdown of cost of materials and whatnot, or he just randomly picked?
No, no.
It's going to cost $120,000.
We have a breakdown of costs. I can provide it to you.
How come that wasn't provided to us in our packet?
I can get it to you.
Okay, if you could, I'd appreciate it. And then did he have, did he say when he would start working? After we approve, if that's what we're going to do?
No, but I'd be happy to reach out to him tomorrow and find out when he can get started for you and let you know.
And did he give you an idea of like, okay, so this section's going to cost, going to be 30 days to do? And then we finish that, so he's, like, his end date, does he have a drop-dead end date? Like, September, like, this has to be finished by September 1st?
We advise him, we want to have it done by September. So he's talking about 45 to 60 days to do construction.
Is that answering your question? Ms. Roberts, can I answer that? So Mayor and Council, on any type of construction project, while contractors give us generic timelines before award of contract, we don't get a specific timeline until that contract's executed. So Ms. Roberts, I promise you, and I said this under the naming of the facility, we will demand a project timeline from our contractor. We are going to update you every two weeks, if not in between every two weeks, on where we are on that. So you will know the project timeline as soon as we receive it from him. You'll receive updates. Are they on schedule? Are they ahead of schedule? Are they behind schedule? Because I want you to be well aware of what's happening. Am I answering your question, Ms. Roberts?
Yes and no. Because from what I remember, this is the same contractor that did the Annex Building, correct?
No.
Oh, it's a different one, okay.
He did City Hall.
Oh, City Hall, okay.
And he completed it on time.
I mean, I guess not seeing his costs, his breakdown of costs, and just knowing it's So what if he starts working and he got, all of a sudden, we start getting these change orders for 10, 15, $20,000 because unforeseen circumstances? I mean, we only have X amount of money to work with.
Right.
So I just, you know, I just want to be upfront and honest that, you know, just a flat fee of $120,000 just doesn't.
He had, he had two opportunities to walk that building and look at what's in there and discuss with us what was going to be done. And we were very specific about the work we wanted done.
Okay.
And he provided this, this, this term.
Uh huh.
And so we're going to hold him to this term.
Okay, and why is it so important that we do the floor now? Is there something wrong with the floor? I mean, I know it's going to be empty and it might, you know, but is there a reason?
That's the main, that's the main reason it's empty right now. If we get people in there, it's going to be much harder to take stuff out.
But is there a reason why we need to do the floor? I mean, is it that it's?
May I add?
Sure.
When we've walked that building and recently, we had a joint meeting, it's not just the floor, it's the entire interior. It looks very worn. If we don't improve the surface appearance of the floor now, I dare say it would be hard for us to do it once we move in. And so I thought this was the opportunity, like this City Hall, to get a complete refresh, and we're not going to have to touch that floor for the next 10 years or more. That's the only reason, Ms. Roberts. I look at that floor and I see stains, I see the concrete that has chips. We're going to have seniors. Yes, yes, and that, that's the reason why. I, I want it to be a, a space that we're extremely proud of, that our seniors go, it's not only bigger, it's, it's fresher. Now, let me qualify that. The Grange Hall is a beautiful facility, and we are so appreciative of it. But when they move into this facility, I don't want to have to take them out for a week because we have to fix something. That's why, ma'am.
My last question, again, kind of going back to this whole road thing on warranties, is there any type of warranty in regards to work if something needs to be fixed after they move in and we see, like, we, we see some, oh, wait, this wasn't in the right place, this needs to be corrected? Is there any type of warranty in regards to that?
Yes, ma'am, we'll make sure there's a warranty in place, a one-year warranty.
Thank you.
Please vote, Donetta.
Second.
Thank you. All right. Motion carries six, one. All right, we're going to go on to G, discussion action on a contest for a new city coin. Councilman McGlaughlin.
All right, so I mentioned at the last council meeting, I participated in Fiesta. One issue we ran into with our vendor is we had an error with their Fiesta medals. So we spent the last few weeks talking to different vendors, and they had shown us some samples of coins, which reminded me, Ms. Semics is the ambassador of our coins. So I met with her just to see, one, if it's ever been tried before, discussed about having a coin design contest for the citizens to do. If it's something we want to do, I, we get some direction here, I'd be more than happy to do all the legwork and drafting everything up. As far as, do we want it to open up to all of Sybalo? Do we want it to open up to high school students? If we want to do just a coin for the mayor and then a coin for council, I don't think we need to go crazy and have every, all seven council members have their own coin, that gets a little excessive. But as one, just looking, are we willing to entertain it? And if so, what kind of scope are we looking at? And I can, I'd be more than happy to do all the legwork and run down the details and bring it back.
Randy, any comments?
I think that'd be a great idea. And as a body, you need to decide how far do we open it up for the contest.
Okay. Councilman Mone? Same. Katie?
This could be a good youth council project for them to design that gives them a project with like a, an end result. I do have issues, I brought them up last year during the budget, with the cost of these coins. I think it was like $8,000 that we're spending on this, something crazy. It's not that much.
Our budget is for marketing.
No, it was, said that coins specifically were a lot of money. So if it's not 8,000, then that's great, that's a little bit of a relief. But I do have a problem with spending money on swag when we're talking about all the other stuff in the city that we can't afford, and we're asking people to raise taxes. But if we do it, I do like the contest idea, either citywide or with youth council, it could be a little bit more narrow. Or even the historic committee, if you want to incorporate history of Sybalo.
Norma?
Yeah, I definitely would like to have this historic committee put some input into a new city coin, for sure. Maybe that could be a, our boards and commissions thing to do, honestly.
Donetta, any comments?
I think it's a great idea. I think it brings the community back into our local government.
Joel?
I don't see anything wrong. We just changed the coin design just last year. Like Katie said, we're spending money, I mean, we've got the coins, whatever the rest of council wants to do.
Okay. Do we have a motion on this one? Oh, go ahead, Jeff.
Ms. Peggy, about how long is our current stock of coins going to last us?
So the coins that we, we have at the present time will probably last us through December of this year.
Okay.
So you have about six more months worth of coins.
All right. Yeah, so my intent is not to replace what we already have in stock, it's more of, we already procure coins, it's an opportunity, if we wanted to, to just have a new design, where it's really at low cost, no cost to us, because it's something we already purchased.
Okay.
So, so the only difference I can see is that there will be an additional cost for a redesign, because you, when you redesign your coin, there will be a, additional cost for redesign.
Ms.
Yeah, and the more colors you use, the more the cost is also. So just to throw out, you know, some, yeah.
So we can work the details, but I do know there are local vendors that do in-house design consultation free of charge.
Do we have a motion on this one? No? Okay. No motion needed? All right. We'll move on to item H, discussion action on a city council consideration of workshop meetings prior to regular council meetings. Mr. Reed.
Mayor and council, this was an item that you discussed at the last meeting. There was some discussion about, well, maybe we do a pilot program to test out a workshop style meeting, because we have several items that come to council where we're really just seeking your guidance and feedback, and those are the more lengthy presentations typically. And so you bantered back and forth on trying one out, and I think what I remember is 5:00 PM sounded okay to some, 4:30 PM as a start time was mentioned by some. So I'm back in front of you. If you want to try this out, let's pick a date for a future meeting, like tonight, you had appointments, you agreed at the next meeting to have more appointments, so we wouldn't do it at the next meeting. But maybe there's a meeting sometime this summer, and I can tell you, there are plenty of topics that we're lining up that will come in your normal meeting that we will move to the workshop.
Like the Shirts EMS, 34 slides tonight.
Yes, sir.
That would be a great candidate.
It's a great candidate.
Okay. So as we work on these agenda reviews, if we can get some sort of indicator as to how long some of these presentations might be, then we can flag those as potentials. So we'll work together on that.
And so if, I'm just here until council makes a decision to try this out, it's not a commitment that you have to keep doing them, but maybe it'll show you the benefit of putting some of these topics on a workshop style. Again, what we typically do, again, from experience previously, is you do a workshop, there's a meal between the workshop and the regular meeting, because we're holding you here from 5:00 or 4:30 PM until the end of the night. The meal allows you to have just some socialization with one another, or make a phone call if that's what you need to do, and then you're back at business at 6:30 PM. I find them highly productive and beneficial to the city council.
I would say no earlier than 5:00, though, Mr. Reed, because some people, they do work. I'm retired, so I don't have to worry about that.
Yes, sir.
But I think it would be beneficial if we tried to just 5:00 o'clock.
What do you think, Donetta? Do you agree?
I agree. I would let it be earlier than 5:00.
Okay.
Okay.
It's only one. I mean, I'll make it work if, if everyone's okay with five. Tuesdays are a little bit tougher for me to get here by 5:00, but I can make it happen, if that works for everyone else.
Okay. So no earlier than 5:00 is what we agree to.
No earlier than 5:00. Yeah, so let me do this. My action is, I will ask the staff, we have several things in the works of future presentations, at my, at the next council meeting, I'll, and maybe in advance, I'll just send you here's some items that we think would work well within a 60-minute workshop, just so you have an understanding or an expectation of what to expect in that first workshop. And that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Reed.
I think, too, the, like, 60-minute workshop sounds like a lot of time, but we had two presentations. One of them was 31 minutes, and the other was 49 minutes. So those two would have already gone over the 60 minutes. So I think, too, when we're looking at what presentations we're thinking about doing at the workshop, we still need to consider the amount of, the length of time of the presentations.
Yes, I, I agree, Ms. Cunningham. Council, are you okay if we target the first meeting in July, that date, Ms. Semics? The 8th, July 8th.
July 8th. Yeah, that's April 8th.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Okay. We're going to go to 11. The council will meet in executive session as authorized by the Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, consultation with attorney to discuss the following. A, city manager slash city secretary appointment, employment, evaluation, duties, discipline, or dismissal. The time is now 9:22 PM. The time is now 9:22 PM.
There it goes, alright. We'll get started here. Just to give you a little background, at the City Council Strategic Management Workshop on April 5th, under Operations Matters and topic of Warming Center, council requested myself to come back with a presentation about our preparedness in regards of a warming center or cooling center. Presentation overview, we're going to identify the different facilities here in Cibolo, operational hours, staffing, and safety protocol, emergency management partners, and shelter activation. As you see, we have these facilities here, the Cibolo New Community Center, the City Hall Annex, the City Hall Council Chambers, and the Cibolo YMCA. One thing that I would definitely like to point out in regards to those facilities, there's no emergency backup for power. So if we were to utilize any of those facilities and power for rolling blackouts or anything, whatever the event is, excuse me, there's no back, there's no generator. So just, just enough while I... Operational hours, the following is short-term, and I've identified the Cibolo Community Center, the City Hall Annex, and the City Hall Council Chambers as a short-term, and those will be utilized, obviously, for evacuation, tornadoes, or apartment fires, you know, something like that, something that's a short duration. If y'all do recall, matter of fact, in our strategic meeting, the Simics mentioned that we did use the Council Chambers as a place of refuge for the subdivision that had the gas leak. So we did utilize the City Hall Council Chambers for that as well. If you look at the new community center for short-term, obviously, we wouldn't use the whole thing, but just the areas where the bathrooms and the kitchen is, and the common area where the senior center is basically located at, that's a good opportunity to, so we can store those people temporarily. One thing that we also need to look at is, what does our neighboring cities do? What is Saguin doing, what is Shirts doing? Are they doing short-term, long-term? We want to make sure that we want to stay on the same page, because if Saguin, excuse me, or Shirts is doing long-term, or if we decide to do long-term, and Shirts does short-term, when they close their facility, where are those people going to go? They may be, come over here, and that may take us beyond our capabilities. Something to think about. Looked at the YMCA for long-term, and that's for instance for severe weather, you know, slow-rising floodwaters, winter storm. And if you look at the YMCA, there, you have plenty of room where you can have your common area where people can hang out, and then, of course, separation with the different basketball courts to separate for the sleeping quarters, you have your showers, and different, in different areas where you can put people, and have restrooms and stuff like that, more of a controlled environment. And there again, that's another facility that does not have emergency backup for electrical Our staffing, internally, it's Cibolo Police, Parks Division, Cibolo Animal Control, city staff that is not directly involved in the incident. You know, there's some discussion that, well, you know, if we utilize the City Hall, the new City Hall Community Center next to the fire station, that the fire department could, could staff that. If there's a significant event, fire staff is going to be detailed to that incident. We can't be at two places at once, and I'll give you a good example during the winter storm. Staff was very rarely at the fire station, they were going from call to call to call. So if staff, if the fire department, on-duty crew was, was asked to stand up a shelter, then they would have to leave to go respond to the call. So that's why a lot of the other agencies, talking with the city of Shirts, city of Saguin, they utilize their Parks Division, the least impacted, to run the, run their shelters. And then, of course, externally, your non, your NGOs, your faith-based, your non-governmental agencies, American Red Cross, CERT teams, and of course, the, the food bank, you know, reaching out to them to help facilitate to run those facilities. Safety protocol, at the end of the day, you know, when you have a place for people to seek refuge, you know, you want to make sure that you offer a safe accommodation for all demographics, from the ADA compliance, special need groups, you know, and then, of course, you make sure, you need to make sure your place gets cleaned, and then, of course, individuals that, I'm pretty sure everybody in this room has a pet, and if that's part of their family, right, if they're going to go somewhere, they're going to bring their pet. So pet crates and supplies, definitely our ACO, or some sort of fashion is going to want to make sure that we have a place for those, for those animals, to, for, to have a shelter for them as well. Diversity within the shelter, cultural, different languages, ages, the abilities, physicals and cognitive, you know, medical needs, you know, religious beliefs, and let's face it, you know, there are some adults that shouldn't be around kids, you know, because of whatever decision they made in life. So that, there's a lot more than just, just gathering a place for everybody to come, and just, to just gather. So that's safety stuff that we need to make sure that we pay attention to. And that's where we rely on the police, to have the police presence here to, to, to help facilitate that. Emergency management partners, you know, obviously, I work very close with, they have a full-time emergency management coordinator, that's his sole job, mine, not wearing two hats, you, so working very closely with, with Shirts, and so if there's something that arises in Shirts, I'll support him, if there's something in Cibolo, he's offered to help support us. And, and of course, they're limited in staff and resources. Qualipi County Emergency Management, you know, administrative staff and resources, they have on hand at the Shirts office that they can accommodate to 100 people. So obviously, as an incident that grows bigger, I can reach out to the Qualipi County Emergency Management and coordinate with them, and that's who are, basically, our partner is, is to coordinate, you know, obviously, we utilize the resources that we have, and then, of course, coordinate with the, with the city management and mayor, say, hey, are we going to take it to the next level? You know, are we going to reach out for the county resources? And then, of course, we have a Texas Department of Emergency Management, that if we go beyond the resources of the county, then we ask the state. And then, of course, the state has a full complement of resources that we can reach out to. And then, of course, if the state doesn't have any, then we go, go, take it all the way up to FEMA, so. And then, of course, if that happens, and of course, the governor has to declare a disaster in order to trigger all that, all that stuff as well. Because if, you've got to remember that if we're asking for those resources, Cibolo is not the only one asking for those resources. The county's asking for those, for those resources as well.
Well, very susceptible because of the train tracks here.
Yes, yeah, yeah, so...
So it could be just Shirts, it could just be Cibolo, it could just be Marion.
Correct.
You know, Marion, it was because of the chlorine, but you've got, I got you what you're saying.
And, and that's one thing that we, we also need to take in consideration, that if we, heaven forbid, we have an incident along the railroad track, or even I-10, that some of the facilities that I've mentioned are off, are off the, off the table because of the evacuation map that we need to do. So that's why we coordinate with Qualipi County, and we may have to tell our citizens, hey, you can't go to the City Hall Annex or the YMCA, you're going to have to go to the YMCA in Shirts. You know, that's why we work very closely with our, with our neighbors, neighbors, to make for sure that we help, because they could have something go down in Shirts, that they may come to Cibolo, that will help support them.
Have you been talking with New Braunfels? I know your brother used to work for them, but you've talked to them as well.
Yeah.
They've got lots of resources up there too.
Yes, sir. So National Emergency Management Response, EMR, it's an all-hazard agency, it's a 503, it's a 501(c)(3) organization. EMR works with federal agencies, and we just here recently signed an emergency service agreement with that organization, and they, they have a lot of, they work with FEMA a lot, and they're, they're located right there in Shirts. And we actually did a tour at the executive level on all the resources that they have. So, and that's, and Qualipi County is a partner with them as well, city of Shirts, and even the state of Texas, and like I said, they have a lot of FEMA grants, or FEMA contracts that they're currently working with. So heaven forbid, something really major happens in Cibolo, they could actually set up a living quarters with air conditioning and all, all that stuff, and they would guide us to, if there is a declaration, so we can recoup some of that cost. If there, but at the end of the day, the governor has to declare a disaster in order to get those funds back. In part of our annex, Annex C, Shelter and Mass Care Section, Organization and Assessment Responsibilities, Under Task, there'd be, the mayor and the city manager will direct the opening and closing of a shelter if do need necessary. So we have our shelter activation, you know, we talked about, you know, extreme heat, you know, shelter, extreme heat relief from typical, activated when a heat index hits a certain, a certain threshold, and talking with the neighboring cities, this is the, the threshold that they've done, and it's typically three days with a supporting forecast, and it's going to go beyond that. Because obviously, you want to make sure that on the third day, the next day's going to be down in the eighties. You know, you don't want to ramp up everything, and then you're just doing it for nothing. So that, that's the trigger point for a lot of the, the neighboring cities, and what, what they recommend. Same thing with the cold, if you're going to have temperatures below 35 degrees for three days and longer with a supporting forecast, then of course, we can follow that aspect of it. And then, of course, the main thing is coordinating with your local emergency management partners on either side, like, like I mentioned before, if we, if we decide to utilize these common areas during the, the short-term, and the neighboring cities is doing short-term, that's great, we're both on the same page, but if, if we're doing long-term, for whatever, if we decided to do long-term, and they're doing short-term, those people may come over here, and of course, that may take us beyond our scope and our capabilities, so just something that, that we need to think about. And then, of course, right now, there's not a line item in our budget in regards to emergency management, on where we get funds from, so, just so y'all know. Any questions over the presentation, over what went over?
Yeah, so, we don't have a line item for emergency, what do you think we would need to start us off?
So, a lot of cities are, and I've reached out to Saguin, and even Shirts, and even discussed with New Braunfels, is that they, they open up a short-term, and if it looks like, if they can't find a place for individuals to go to with the Red Cross, or that avenue, they've actually put money aside where they would put them up in a hotel for two nights, so at least it gives them an area, or guide them into the direction where there's county, county facilities that are going to be open.
What kind of cost should we look at putting in that lineup?
And, and that's where I'm getting... And that's where I'm getting that, you know, so if you do that part of it, you look at, you know, and I'll give you a good example with the winter storm that we had. You know, we were busy, but to my knowledge, nobody contacted me or even Brian, that they said they needed a place to stay. Everybody either, they were with family or something like that. So with that said, is having some money, you know, I think city of Seguin actually set aside in Gualope County, they authorized the judge or the far, Patrick Pender, the far marshal, the emergency management coordinator, that there's a line item up to $6,000 that they could at least have a hotel for the family can go for a night or two. And then, of course, you know, that's going with the hotel and vetting with them to make sure that they have the availability. And one thing that they did mention is that you don't want to get a high-end hotel because they don't want to leave, but then you don't want to give them a really cheap hotel, just something in the middle, and preferably something that they offer a breakfast in the morning. But with that said, depending on what the event is, if they don't have any power, then you're really passing a buck, if you will. So in regards to funding, you know, those were the numbers that people, that the other emergency management coordinators were talking about, about $6,000 to $10,000 set aside to help accommodate on that end.
I do recall that the city of Seguin used their local library. Do, does the library have backup? And I believe Universal City also used a library.
I did not know what Shirts' library, if they have any.
Seguin, Seguin used the library and so did the city, was it Universal City? Also used a library just as well, so I'm not sure if they have any backup generators at all, but I'm curious to what the cost was for that just as well. Their line item, if they're using their libraries, if it's minimal.
I know a lot of them that were using their public common spaces were open just in a short period of time. They did not carry it for overnight.
Right, they only opened them up during the day.
During business hours.
They had to go find some more else to stay.
And during that time, they would give them a place where they would obviously provide maybe a small meal for them, a place to give them literature so they can say, hey, you know, here's a state resource where you can go in that's going to be open. So they just don't say, hey, you got to leave, at least they give them some literature, say, hey, here's a couple of avenues to the Red Cross, or here's going to be a state shelter that's going to be open that we can coordinate transportation to get you there if you cannot go anywhere else.
Well, not that I want to start one, but I know Seguin has a housing authority, so does Shirts, which is a little different, and they're able to coordinate that kind of stuff.
Anyone else have any questions?
I think just having a plan and coordinating with the county would be helpful. This last year, when it got really cold, Seguin had people, you could call dispatch or whatever, and tell them that you needed to go somewhere, but they only had the library, and that was the only place in Guadalupe County that had any kind of shelter, and it was only during the day. And if you're a Cibolo resident who's older or not able to, doesn't have transportation or whatever, yes, I'm sure our police and firefighters would for sure want to help them out and probably would offer to drive them to a shelter. But then that's taking our staff off of our emergency here, potential emergencies here, to drive them 30 minutes to Seguin and 30 minutes back. So I think just having a plan in place where we can coordinate with the county, we don't have to be the first stop for the county, we don't have to be the one place that offers shelter. But if we do have another winter storm or something like that, just kind of having a plan in place with the county and with Shirts and with our neighbors to know, these are all of the available options in the area. Maybe we only offer a day one, maybe the senior center is open for a little bit, they already have daytime hours. There should be a staff member there, so while they're open, we allow people who aren't part of the senior center to come in and sit and get warm. Something like that may be appropriate for Cibolo to participate in. But it was kind of surprising that the county, like nobody in Guadalupe County, none of the cities, no one had any kind of shelter. And I got pulled with my job to go work in warming centers that were overnight warming centers in a different city. Granted, that's a much different situation, but if there is a need, if there is something crazy that happens, I'd like to know that we have a plan and we've, and it's not just us taking it on for the whole county, that we're coordinating with the county and we have a plan in place and that we're not trying to scramble to figure out, well, where is our emergency shelter? If we have a tornado come through and decimate 11:03, where do we send people? And I know the Red Cross and these other organizations come in, but just to kind of have, if we have a massive freeze or something crazy, we know that the plan is, here are the shelters that are available in Guadalupe County, here's what Cibolo is contributing to that, based on the resources that we have and the capacity that we have, period. So I don't think we need to do 24-hour stations or anything like that, but there was really no information. Every piece of information that I got, even when I called the county and when I called the Seguin line, they only knew of the one at the library in Seguin. Nobody knew of anything else, it just seemed like there was a breakdown in communication. And we could send them to San Antonio, but who's going to take, who's going to take people when the roads are icy? So that was my concern, so thank you for all of this. I think that this is helpful and gives us a place to start, it lets us know kind of what's going on in the area.
Yes, ma'am.
It just seems like there needs to be a bigger conversation with everyone in our area to kind of say, who's going to do what?
Correct, yeah, and within your packet, there was the shelter annex. And within what I have with Gualope County and the other emergency management coordinators, we have all these other plans from derailments to floods to tornadoes, so the plan's in place. I hope I'll never have to use them.
Me too.
But that's just one of the things, and that's why when we do activate our soft opening of our EOC for Cibolo Fest and the holiday parade, we practice on a controlled event. So heaven forbid when we do have something, we're, all of our executive team are already accustomed that these are the forms that we need to fill out and to move forward so we can make sure to get reimbursed if it does get beyond that.
Thank you, chief. All right, moving on to 10J, discussion on budget workshops and having departments to speak on their needs wants, Councilman Hicks.
Thank you, mayor. I just want to make sure that when we get to our budget workshops that are coming quickly, that we have the opportunity to hear from the department heads on their wants that they would like and then actual needs. But I'd also like on that to see at the end of the budget, a list of everybody's salaries. I know that was brought up with Charles Charter Review, but the list of the salaries of the different positions and how many people are getting, so.
We provided that to you last year, we'll provide it to you again.
It just, specific line items is what I'm talking about. I'd like to see that because I know that when we were first here, we got those. Last year, it wasn't so much, the year before, it wasn't so much, but.
Yeah, last year, we gave you line item detail, asked for feedback, we did that the year before as well, yeah. We have the agenda set for June 17th, so if after June 17th, council thinks it's worthy to hear from department heads wants and needs, that's perfectly fine. My priority is, first thing you expect is a balanced budget, so the city manager works with the finance director who meets with every department head who submits a base budget, and we make sure it's accurate and thorough, and then we're working to get it to be a balanced budget. Secondly, I always strive to focus on council's priorities. And if there's any money left over, wants and needs make sense, but if the money's out before we get to wants and needs. Yes, sir, yeah. So after June 17th budget workshop, which is next week, I sent to Ms. Simics the draft agenda, looks a lot like past ones, except we have specific things we'll cover. And then, we're working to finalize the PowerPoints, we should have those done by Thursday, and any material we'll be submitting so it can be sent off to the council. This year, I told Ms. Simics, let's broadcast our budget workshop, so we will stream our budget workshop.
Thanks so much.
I wanted to just give you a heads up, and I don't know if you prefer all the budget questions to be emailed prior to the budget workshop or not, but a couple of things. Last year, I had a lot of questions about the technology because we get more of a general general ledger, GL number, level budget. We don't get each individual item under that budget line, so like for utilities, there's a technology line, $500,000, we don't know specifically what that is for. And that was one of my big questions last year, is what is this specifically for? Why are we spending this much money on technology? And when it was broken down, it made sense. So technology's one I'll be asking about, other vehicles is another one. Why do some departments have, appear to have multiple vehicles? How much are we paying for these vehicles? Do we really need this many as part of the fleet service? And then, last year too, I had made a recommendation to remove all of the unnecessary swag items and any kind of branded merch shirts type stuff, and it stayed in the budget. So that did not get removed last year, and so I'd like to make sure that we're looking at that this year, especially in our own council portion of the budget, and making sure that we're not, if we're asking everyone else to cut, we need to be cutting ourselves and cutting things like that, that they're the nice-to-have things, but they're not the need-to-have. A lot of cities are in a huge deficit this year with potential property tax cuts and everything else that could potentially happen. We've got to be very careful with the money that we are spending and that we're allocating. We have a lot, a lot, a lot of projects that we need to do, water projects, road projects, maintenance, all sorts of things, you name it, we need money. And so we've got to be very careful with what we're budgeting for. I'm preaching to the choir, but I'm saying it anyway.
You are, and I appreciate it.
But we have to be very careful with it. I know that other cities are cutting a lot of staff to try to make up for the deficit, and I don't want to ever get to that point. I don't think that we're in that position, but I want to make sure that we're preparing now for things that could potentially help happen down the road that could impact our budget. We need to be, we need to pretend like bad things are going to happen and prepare for it so that we're not being reactionary when it, if it ever does happen, so.
And Ms. Cunningham? I'm one step ahead of you on the technology, and you're one step ahead of me on fleet, but you'll get both. Tracy Beekman's already prepared a few slides, maybe five or six, Brian? And then, he's printing out every piece of technology that we pay for. It's about 1.6 million, don't quote me on that, could be plus or minus on that. You should know why we exert or use 1.6 million for technology. It is an increase over last year for two reasons. Police Department RMS system, you already know about that. That's 100, it's under 100,000, but I'm just going to round up, that's $100,000 more just in technology. And then, Public Works has Cartograph, that's new software, but there's no cost in FY '26 because we got the first two years in rolled in. So we're going to go over that because I wanted clarity around that. It's real easy for us to run a fleet report, and so we'll go ahead and add that to the material. So those are the two things you wanted, and as far as swag, that'll be the first place we're cutting because it's not, it's a nice-to-have, to use your words, and it is a tight budget. I sent an email before the council meeting, did not expect y'all to read it, but there are several headwinds hitting us, and like other cities, it's going to be a tight budget.
Okay, I had something else in there.
If you or anybody else has an idea, please email me. We do have the outline of the agenda, so if it's in addition to, if we can gather that data, we'll be happy to provide it to you, but.
Facilities, so I've mentioned this, I think in one of my meetings, that I went to the school district, community advisory, whatever it's called. They have a facility, one of their presentations was on the facilities and the needs of each facility, and they had really great documentation on how to, for each school, they had, this is the age of the floor, and this is the useful age, or the useful life of the floor, 20 years, and we're at 19 years, that will need to be replaced. And then it kind of helped prioritize things that need to be fixed and replaced in each building. And I know I've mentioned that before, but if we have some needs to learn, that would be helpful.
With the, with the budget season too, just to kind of know what we might need to update. We shouldn't need to update the annex, we just did that. We shouldn't need to update this building because we just did that. But I think some of the fire stations may need repairs, the police station, we talked a little bit about that in the CIP committee, things that need to be done. If we can kind of prepare for those and do those in little batches at a time, maybe spread throughout the year, or if we know it's going to cost $50,000 and we find $50,000 in savings, then that would be a good project to plug in.
I'll let Mr. Huggins respond, but we did remember your comment about the school district.
Yeah, we can start putting that stuff together for you and get a better idea of where we're at. So I'll work with our facilities group and start getting that put together for you.
And after you brought that to our attention, we know J.D. Mosley, who did that work, and we did ask for some input from him on that, so, yeah, it's a great idea.
Very good, all right, on to item K, discussion from council members that have attended seminars, events, or meetings. We'll start with Hicks.
Well, I had an MPO, well, started off Friday, I told y'all earlier about, but I had an MPO in the middle of the day, talking about the different projects, our Tech Stop project from rodeo way to 78. We're going to have to, not us, but Tech Stop's going to have to look for funds. They're adding it to their list because it has increased. But it's not the only one, there's like five of them that have increased. So we are working diligently with the policy board members to let them know that these are things that we're going to have to be looking at. Today, I had Commissioners Court, extremely long Commissioners Court today. They're dealing with their budget, dealing with their emergency service, it was a good meeting as well. Other than that, that's all I've got.
I've just been at my CRWA meetings, I also went to the Board of Managers meetings for CRWA, again, trying to absorb as much as I can about water, and that there's a lot of stuff that's getting ready to come down the pipeline from that direction that Cibolo really needs to start thinking about funds as well.
Donetta?
Was able to attend the Police Department banquet and last Friday, and had a great time seeing everyone get awards, and also was able to make it to the fishing tournament also just as well and see a mech and just everybody that was out there was having a great time, and yeah, it was a good time.
Thank you.
We all went to the CCMA meeting, the joint meeting on that, that was very informative. And then we had the joint P&amp;Z Board of Adjustments meeting for the UDC. For the UDC, that was very helpful. The team that set that up did a really good job kind of keeping us moving and keeping us engaged in that. After the CCMA meeting, I came over here to go to the UDC or whatever, the Old Town, Old Town Open House, and I got over here at 7:28, and they had already packed up, and the flyer that we had online said 8 o'clock. And then I'm looking at the calendar here, and it says that the open house was from 3 to 5. So I think that the, we need to kind of look at the times that things are available. I heard from another resident that the meeting's on Friday for the open house, the open house focus groups, on all of our flyers, it said they started at 10:30 and they arrived at 10, and they had already started. So I don't know if there's some kind of disconnect, I don't know if there's some kind of disconnect in the times that things are actually happening or if there's a change in the times and it's not being communicated with our communication department for those to be updated, but that, we need to probably check on that because I don't know how many people may have missed out on attending because of the times. I would also like with the Old Town Open House, I didn't, wasn't able to attend either one because the one ended early, and then the other one was during the day. If possible, if they could do one on a Saturday, that would be great. I think there were a lot of people, including some business owners, who told me that they would have liked to attend, but they couldn't because it was during business hours. So if we could have another one or get feedback in a different way from some people who couldn't attend, that would be great. But I will say, even though I came over here after they had packed up, the team from planning and the team from the consultant, they did go over what they had discussed with everyone, and they showed me some of the sticky notes, got a lot of really good feedback. I wish we had youth council still where they could contribute because this is the type of stuff that youth council was kind of, what I was hoping youth council could help with is give feedback on these things. They need to be engaged too. When planning had gone to that open house for the kids, we had it at the workshop, they put up the boards from, not open house, the career day. They put up the boards and the feedback from all the kids and all the things that the kids wanted to see in Cibolo. That was really great. They're the ones who are going to be, they're impacted by what we put in here too. And a lot of what we do is just geared toward adults, so I'd like to see about getting more input from them. But based on what I was able to see of those, they did a really good job, staff and the consultants, I was impressed.
Honey, anything?
The joint meeting over Cibolo tomorrow with planning and zoning and Board of Adjustments was really good. We had stations, we moved around and do that business about interacting. I thought it was a really good meeting. What else? I've been observer at a couple of, like EDC and a couple Charter Review Commission meetings that were aborted. But tried. That's about it.
Thank you, sir. Randy?
I'm good.
Jeff? All right, let's move on to L, discussion on items the city council would like to see on future agendas. We'll start with Jeff.
I'm good.
Randy?
Nothing for now.
With the master plan, or not master plan, the charter review, it's getting late. I'm not remembering things very well. The charter review meeting, I know one was rescheduled because the attorney wasn't there. I would like to see about getting, making sure that we have a backup attorney. Like it's a larger firm. Is there someone who's on call that can just come and sit down and be there so that we can continue to meet? If there's a, if we know in time, like if someone gets in a car wreck or something on the way to the meeting, obviously that can't be avoided. But if we know ahead of time if there could be a backup there so we don't have to cancel the meeting because coordinating fifteen, twenty people is tricky. The second thing I would like to see on a future agenda or us looking into having a discussion about is projects for committees. We have our strategic plan and we have all these council things that we would like to see that we work really hard on and staff works really hard on throughout the year. Our committees don't always have a project or something that they're working on together. A lot of times committees, being on a committee myself, it feels like you're just sitting there and you're receiving information, then you leave. And, yes, so in the past, the Parks Commission took on the senior center idea. They did that project themselves. They interviewed, they got the cost, they did all of that work for us. If we have people who are volunteering to be on a committee and are willing to do some of the work, then we should use them. Same with youth council, same with the historic, the historic committee. I think that if we have, EDC is very clearly defined. They have projects, they are actively working on things. P&amp;Z, same thing. They're very active.
This is an agenda?
This is an agenda item for the, I want to have a discussion about it in the future about projects and how to implement our strategic plan into our committees so that the committees aren't just there to check a box saying, yeah, I went to a history committee meeting. We met, we talked about the history of Cibolo and then we left. It would be like projects for the committees.
Okay, you got that, Peggy?
I had that down as projects for appointed committees.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, understood. Norma, anything?
I'd like to see on the next meeting, the updated non-smoking ordinance, please.
Donetta, anything?
I would like to have the master, I'm going to go to the master gardening thing that's on Thursday. And if that gets approved, I would like to have that added as a discussion action item for that to be addressed for our garden, community garden.
Ms. Roberts, during the break, one, Sherri McDaniel actually walked out to talk to the lady that was speaking tonight, has her phone number. We're putting on the next Parks and Recreation Commission agenda. Did you want her to have something on the council agenda? I just want to have clarity.
Yeah, I'd like to know the council agenda as well.
No matter what, whether they approve or not, I want.
The reason that I was asking for this is because it was my husband that she talked to and he told her to come to council today.
Good.
And discuss this.
Yes.
So we need to get it out because it has been addressed via email with no response.
Okay.
So we need to address it.
Yes.
And we need to get this garden out for the community. That's the purpose of it.
I agree, ma'am.
We need to, yeah, we need to have it out there. And I'm going to go send it on Thursday, so I just want, we need to discuss it.
Yes, ma'am.
See, where goes?
Brian, we'll put on the next agenda. We'll put it on the next council agenda. It'll be on the next Parks and Recreation Commission. Sounds great, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, last item is M, discussion action on the review and confirmation of all upcoming special meetings and workshops and scheduling the time, date, and place of additional special meetings or workshops. Peggy Simics. Anything, Peggy?
Just want to remind everyone about Friday. We have Flag Day. It's at nine o'clock. So we have Flag Day and we're also honoring the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of the Army at the same time. So we do have a big ceremony. The flags will be put out on Friday morning. And we'll also have a cake that will have half a flag on it and half the twenty-fifth, two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of the Army on it. So I think it'll be a nice ceremony. We have both the flag ceremony and a speaker with the Army. So I think it'll be great if you can attend. And also want to remind everyone, we have the workshop, our first budget workshop on the seventeenth. You should get your agenda probably tomorrow. You may get your presentations the following day, but you're going to get the agenda. We'll be sending that.
Ms. Peggy, do you need a small bio for the speaker for Friday to give her an introduction? Or is it just a matter of what do you, what do you need in order to?
I think there's, you could probably get up there and introduce her and give her bio at that time.
Okay.
I don't see any problem with that.
Okay, thank you.
And I will have an Army flag over there, too.
Anybody get the Army song, too?
I'm still trying to do that.
Item thirteen. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.